Chicago, but she is joining us via Zoom. There she is. Hello. All right, so we're going to go ahead and start the meeting with a Pledge Allegiance. As always, Councilmember Boswell, will you please start? Thank you. And I just wanted to give a small nod to, on the screen earlier, we usually just kind of say what's happening. You see the Instagram drone showing City Hall and what's about to happen on the agenda. Today, we also got to see Ellen Root, one of our community members who has passed away. And I know that we shared some through Councilmember Boswell at our last meeting, but just thought you could see some of the public art that was in what he has done in our community. And that was part of the show today. So with that, without further ado, I'll move over to City Attorney. And City Attorney, can you share the closed session report out?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council did meet in closed session on three items. A robust closed session schedule. One matter of conference with legal counsel, existing litigation related to a claim filed by the Elks Lodge arising out of a city open space and maintenance easement and some floodwater erosion on their property. No reportable action was taken on that matter. Second matter of conference with legal counsel on a matter of anticipated litigation with the facts unknown to a potential opponent. And that's one potential case. Conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, and that is two related cases. City of San Luis Obispo versus Righetti and Righetti Ranch versus the City of San Luis Obispo. Cases which have not been consolidated. And there was also no reportable action taken on either of those matters.
Thank you so much. Well, as often, we get to start our meeting with a couple of proclamations. One, we have Indigenous Peoples' Day and Arbor Day. So I'm going to start out with the proclamation. And then I will meet our members who are receiving our proclamations at the podium, which at that point, they'll get about three minutes to share about their organization and what their experience is with the proclamation. Sorry, my words just left me there. So I'll meet Mona Alivis Tucker, the Tribal Chair of the Yak Tichu Tichu Yak Tilhini Northern Shumash Tribe of San Luis Obispo County and Region at the podium when we are ready. So the second Monday of October 2025 was Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas San Luis Obispo is built on the Tilhini homeland and villages of the Indigenous peoples of the region, Indigenous Peoples' Day shall reflect the ongoing struggles of Indigenous people of this land and shall celebrate the thriving culture and value that Indigenous people add to our city. The city of San Luis Obispo offers gratitude to Native people on behalf of the people of San Luis Obispo in recognition of the Indigenous care for this land and in honor of Indigenous culture and philosophy. Now therefore, I, Erica A. Stewart, Mayor of the City of San Luis Obispo, on behalf of the entire City Council, proclaim the second Monday of October this year and heretofore annually as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we strongly encourage San Luis Public Schools to include the teaching of Indigenous people's history and also encourage local businesses, organizations, and public institutions to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
Haciu misa saxi, ki istu mistu. Hello, my friends. I have faith in you. Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council, and residents of San Luis Obispo. San Luis Obispo, of course, is very important to our tribe. And in the capacity as Tribal Chair, I represent families who come from throughout this region, with many of our villages throughout San Luis Obispo County, including the city of San Luis Obispo. And this is the town where I was born, but I've lived my life in southern part of San Luis Obispo County. And on behalf of the tribe, I would like to introduce my cousin Wendy Lucas, who is a resident of San Luis Obispo, to speak on our behalf. And Wendy and I, back a few generations, are grandmothers or sisters. And it's an honor to introduce her to you. Oh, Ellen, haciu. And I hope this is okay because we were told we each had three minutes. So if we can, so sorry, is that okay? Start. So haciu misa saxi, hello, my friends. In 2017, two young local teenagers who were in the wonderful Outside Now program spoke before this body and changed the history of the city. I did try to locate them for this meeting, but they were busy. They're both in their twenties. But at that time, only 35 cities in this country had shifted from honoring a man with a horrific history to honoring the first peoples of this country. Our City Council was brave enough in their unanimous vote to challenge the status quo even before LA and San Francisco. So we thank you once again, as Slow continues to demonstrate leadership for change. And the work continues. In these days of weary battle for human rights and dignity, I do choose hope to continue to have hope. I have hope in a government body such as this listens, really listens to two young people and votes to change. I have hope in partnerships such as beautifully developed with the tribe, Cal Fire and the city of San Luis. Thank you again, Lucia Pullman, Bob Hill, and Freddie Ott, have culminated in bringing back cultural burns, Indigenous knowledge, and wisdom respected and supported. Can more be done? Yes. When my daughters attended Slow Coastal Schools, Columbus Day was a school holiday, and my grandson now attends TK at a local school in this district. And there's no public school observance, as can be found in other places. Also around 2017, I was in a meeting with the city and our RM staff discussing the makeover of Mission Plaza. At that time, our tribe was offered the little parking lot across from the art museum to develop into a tribal cultural area as a continuum of the cultural walk down the plaza culminating in the Slow Rep Theater. I don't know what happened since that discussion, except for some major changes like the pandemic. And as we all know, where the work has begun on Mission Plaza. But just as it is our responsibility to all those who came before us and those who are to come in the future to continue the fight, with the returning land that was stolen from us, educating folks that indeed, we are still here. And none of, without the courage, strength, and resilience of all of our ancestors, none of us would be here. And that continuing to tell the truth matters, even painful history. Because to heal as a community and as a nation, we must do so to move forward together. I don't know where this journey will take us next, and sometimes our steps do grow very weary. But I continue to have hope that we will continue to move in the direction that will make all our children and grandchildren and beyond proud. I'll for this proclamation reading and for this opportunity to speak to you today. And we don't have a word for goodbye in our language, so what we say is sumokini always. Wamitani yakitan is mutalinkatichu. And I speak the language of the people of San Luis, the people of the full moon. And just to say, that's not part of anything, but Cal Poly made these stickers several years ago, which say, "You are on native land," and they name us, YTT Northern Shumash. And we've handed these out to, when we have state officials here or the federal guys, NOAA and the NRC. And it's just a really, it's a tangible acknowledgement of their acknowledgement. So I'd like to share this with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you for that. And now we get to move on to Walter Galt, our Arborist. We will be sharing about Arbor Day. Bigger letters, one second. So whereas the city of San Luis Obispo is committed to recognizing that the urban forest, or as we call it, our community forest, is an essential part of city infrastructure that supports public health, climate resilience, and community well-being. Because trees and beauty to outdoor spaces provide a joy, sorry, provide a source of joy and spiritual renewal and increase the environmental, social, and economic sustainability of our city. Community forests deliver measurable benefits by cooling to reduce the urban heat, sorry, the urban heat island effect, sequestering carbon, managing storm water, improving air quality, providing wildlife habitat, increasing property values, reducing energy costs, and creating workforce opportunities. The city of San Luis Obispo celebrated its first Arbor Day in 1983 and has been recognized as a Tree City USA for 42 years by the National Arbor Day Foundation. The city desires to continue its community forestry program by encouraging the safe growth of existing trees, protecting mature canopy from unnecessary removal, and planting 10,000 new trees by 2035. That's unique trees, unique new trees. Now therefore, I, Erica A. Stewart, Mayor of the City of San Luis Obispo, on behalf of the entire council, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2025, as Arbor Day in the city of San Luis Obispo and urge all community members to support our city's community forestry program by protecting and planting trees to promote the well-being of present and future generations.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, Council. Thank you for this proclamation and this opportunity to receive it. Up there, we have our Arbor Day event from last year, 2024, along the Slow Safety Trail. We planted 25 trees. And this year, we're looking to do it again at Santa Rosa Park. We look to trees to provide many community-wide benefits. When our urban forest is maintained, replenished, and filled with tree age diversity, it's better for our lives because those trees are stacking all those benefits together. My name's Walt Galt. I'm the Urban Forestry Program Coordinator and City Arborist. And I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of all city staff, nonprofit partners, and individuals in the community who manage trees. There are individuals who have empowered other residents and found creative ways to establish and maintain trees throughout the city. The establishment and maintenance of trees is hard work. It's a resource-intensive endeavor. Staff is still counting, but since the city set a goal of planting 10,000 trees, we estimate that over 6,000 trees have been planted through a combination of city planting projects, new development, and individual contributions via TEN-TAL. To acknowledge this proclamation, please come to the city's Arbor Day event on Saturday, November 1st, at Santa Rosa Park. This event kicks off the tree planting season that lasts through spring. If you're interested in getting trees planted in your neighborhood, you should come to Arbor Day. If you want to know what fire smart trees to plant in a very high fire hazard severity zone, come to Arbor Day because we're going to be planting them. If you're curious about how the city uses best arboricultural practice to preserve mature trees, you should come to Arbor Day at Santa Rosa Park because they're there. In addition to tree planting, there will be local educational speakers, free tree giveaways. Come by to pick up a tree sampling, get Arbor Day swag, connect with city staff and urban forestry partners. This is your opportunity to connect with us on Saturday, November 1st. Also, this week, at the farmer's market, we have a booth where you can meet the city's urban foresters, other city staff, and pick up a free treat. Hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, so next up, we have the City Manager Report. But we do have a lot of new people here, so I just want to give you a little bit of lay of the land. We do have our City Manager Report, and then we will have items that are not on the agenda, public comment. So the slip of paper that our city clerk is holding up, if you would like to speak, make sure you've completed one of those slips so that you can speak during the items that are not on the consent agenda, not on the public hearing agenda. And that will give you your moment. Otherwise, if it's on the consent agenda or on the public hearing agenda, I will call you in a few moments. With that, City Manager.
Thank you very much. Good to see everyone here this evening. I do have quite a number of updates, so I'll try to make it quick because I know we have a lot of items on our agenda this evening. We'll start with, you'll sense a theme for the first few slides based on the fact that we're in the later half of October. We want to make sure everyone is aware, our Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting its annual family-friendly Boo Bash on Friday, October 24th, at Meadow Park. Bring the whole family for games, a photo booth, food trucks, and an outdoor movie, and a haunted house, and more. We do our haunted house in a way to make sure there's an opportunity for everyone. So there's a sensory-friendly haunted house open from 4:00 to 4:30 p.m., a lights-on kid-friendly experience beginning at 4:30. And then the real scares start at 5:30 p.m. and run until darkness descends on the park at about 7:30 p.m. So this event is free and open to the public, so hope to see everyone there. There's something for everyone. Next, we wanted to make sure everyone is also aware, on the same theme, that along with the fun comes extra levels of safety that we want to make sure people are aware of and abide with in our community. The Halloween Safety Enhancement Zone begins this Friday and covers two consecutive weekends, October 24th through the 27th, and then again, October 30th through November 3rd. During this timeframe, fines for party-related violations are doubled. Our police department has increased staffing for both weekends in anticipation of increased calls for service. Our staff will be at the costume contest in Mission Plaza on October 30th to hand out treats. And on Halloween night, our motor units will be patrolling the neighborhoods with lots of trick-or-treaters to provide visibility and traffic safety. So just a few things that, just to make sure everybody's extra safe and they're aware we're out in the community and also really trying to make sure that our kind of nuisance activities and party-related things are kept to a minimum during that timeframe. And then our third item related to Halloween is actually after Halloween. So for the second year in a row, our Solid Waste and Recycling Program is hosting a pumpkin smash. This will be heard on November 1st from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at French Park. Families are encouraged to bring your old Halloween pumpkins and smash them into a large green bin that's provided by San Luis Garbage. This helps everyone learn how those pumpkins turn into valuable compost at our local anaerobic digester. Attendees may also enjoy food trucks, lawn games, face painting, and can take compost home with them for their at-home gardens. So for more information on this free event or to volunteer, if you're interested, please go to slowcity.org/recycle. And if you can't attend the event, no worries. Please still put your pumpkins in your green, in your green bin. It counts as food scrap recycling, and it will turn into compost at some point. So you can come see how it all works and also, you know, have fun smashing pumpkins. This time, literally, not just in music. Next, we want to talk a little bit about our downtown. We know that our downtown is probably on a lot of folks' minds. It certainly is on ours. And we've been hearing from our community about concerns related to the downtown. And we really want to take an opportunity to assure folks that the city cares deeply about our downtown and remains committed to working with Downtown Slow, our local businesses, and property owners to support a vibrant and welcoming environment where our businesses can succeed and where residents and visitors alike can enjoy all that downtown has to offer. The city invests millions of dollars every year in ongoing maintenance and upkeep to keep our downtown vibrant. We provide regular power washing and sidewalk cleaning, weekly sidewalk and bike lane sweeping and leaf blowing, street sweeping Monday through Friday. Trash and recycling containers are emptied daily. And general maintenance, including tree planting and trimming. And hopefully, folks have seen a lot of that activity happening just over the past week or two because we've certainly been doubling down and making sure that this is happening in a really visible way. The city has also invested in new street banners, landscaping, downtown safety barricades. So it's interesting, you see folks admiring our meridian barriers. They work really well, and they're vibrantly colored. Those are things that the city has invested in over time to make our farmer's market and other events safe. We also have invested in cross-street lighting, which are kind of zigzag lighting, holiday activations, public art installations, and creek walk enhancements. Looking ahead, we're really excited to bring back our Bi-Local Bonus Program this holiday season. We will be unveiling an enhanced Mission Plaza as well during that timeframe with a new outdoor dining and seating area and new public restrooms. We will be celebrating Slow Restaurant Month in January and completing our Cultural Arts District parking garage by the end of February or early March. I'll highlight that actually in a couple of slides. And for those who haven't yet had the chance, there's still time to enjoy the Piano in the Plaza through Friday, October 31st, because we are in October. So for more on what to look forward to in downtown, I'm happy to introduce our Downtown Slow CEO, LeBrenne Harris, who has something to highlight actually on our next slide as well.
Hello and good evening. We at Downtown Slow are quite ecstatic to, we're not quite sure if this is a first or bringing back after a really long time. But our sidewalk, Downtown Slow's sidewalk sale is going to take place this Saturday from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m. I've been warning people about the last nine months, the holidays are right around the corner. So it's, I told them nine months ago, it's here. And so we're excited that we have about 42 businesses that are participating. And that also includes some restaurants that are involved as well. And it's not just on Higera Street. We have some of the businesses on Marsh Street, as well as on Monterey Street and up to Palm Street. So we are very excited to be able to host this event with the help and the support from the city to be able to bring this event to our community, this really special downtown that we get to represent for our businesses. Oh, I'm sorry, forgot one thing. The one thing that we do have that guests can sign up for is kind of a passport-style type of program to where if you, for every six businesses that you visit and/or check into, enters you into a chance to win a gift card bundle to downtown business or businesses at a value of at minimum $40, and some of them are more than $40. So you can register at downtownslow.com/sidewalk to register for that.
Ask you a quick question. So is there an app to download with that, or do you just log in and register in no app?
There is no, there is no app. On the day of, we will have maps and locations to identify those who are participating.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've got, I've got just a.
I don't usually bring it up to public comment, but if you would like to cheer for something, please do this. If you don't like something, do this. Thank you so much.
Although I really love the enthusiasm for our downtown sale and coming downtown to patron our businesses. So thank you, everyone. Hope to see everyone out there on Saturday. Just a couple more things for us to highlight. We wanted to make sure everyone's aware of the progress that we've been making on our Cultural Arts District parking structure and really to highlight a couple of things just related to the construction. So our contractor is currently working on the exterior facade of the garage. And the scaffolding will come down within the next couple of months to reveal the progress we've made so far. Mission-style sidewalks and curb ramps are being installed along Palm, Napomo, and Monterey Streets. And work in the roadway has begun along Napomo Street, including new paver crosswalks. So to prepare the area for our holiday parade on December 5th, Napomo Street is going to be closed from Palm to Dana Street. So that entire stretch of the street is going to be closed. Again, this closure allows the contractor to work more efficiently and helps shorten the overall construction impacts on the area and to make sure that we are able to open that area for sure in time for our holiday parade on December 5th. Overall, our project completion is anticipated to be done toward the end of February with potential weather delays maybe pushing that into early March. But just wanted to make sure folks were aware of that street closure and the intent behind it, as well as the really amazing work that has been happening there. If you go by, it will look like a parking garage because tons of work has happened already. And then the last item on our slides here is really just a preview of our next meeting on November 4th. Really want to highlight, we'll be going over our year-end budget report. So we concluded our fiscal year at the end of June of 2025, so we'll let everyone know how we ended. And then we will be having a discussion about the value engineering work that we have completed on the Prado, Overpass, and Bridge projects. So we'll be bringing forward the conclusion of that work with a couple of alternatives to talk through that may reduce the overall cost of the project. So that's it for me from the City Manager Report.
Thank you for that. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. So people can take home compost after they smash their pumpkins?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect.
I don't want to promise that it's from your actual pumpkin, but there will be compost available, yes.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you so much. I look forward to judging the costumes at Mission Plaza on the 30th. Any questions for my colleagues? Vice Mayor? All right. Well, thank you so much, City Manager. And we will move forward to items that are not on the agenda, public comment. Again, I know so many more people have joined. City Clerk, would you please hold up that slip of paper? If you have not completed one of those slips of paper and you'd like to share with us a public comment, please make sure that you do. All right, with that, City Clerk, do we have any comments for items not on the agenda?
Yes, we have one, and that's Sean. My name is Sean, and I'm a social worker and civil rights advocate, and I am here to provide public notice. This is in accordance with USC Rules of Civil Procedure, as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 of the United States Supreme Court. The United States Constitution has the overarching requirements that every state must follow. This is indisputable. States cannot enact their own alternative legislation substituted for the guarantees of the United States Constitution. That would mean that state laws are more powerful than the Constitution, and that is unlawful. Clause 1 of Amendment 5 states that no person shall be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless on presentment or indictment by a grand jury. However, the state of California has enacted its own alternative legislation permitting prosecuting attorneys and police officers to charge by way of information as opposed to indictment. That is unconstitutional. An emolument violation is when you pay a public official to break the law. The Constitution has two areas that enforce this. Article 1, Section 10 says, "No state shall create any law that shall impair the obligation of contracts." So police officers, prosecutors, judges, they're all under contract. A contract to perform based on the oath or affirmation that they took to support and defend the Constitution. Contract parameters are defended within the United States Constitution. And when a state enacts an inferior law that directs their agents to disobey the United States Constitution, that is a violation of Article 1, Section 10. The 14th Amendment is the other place where you'll find the reinforcement of this issue. And that is where it states that "no state shall create or enforce any law that shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the United States citizens." The privileges and immunities of the United States citizens are at a minimum, those enumerated within the Bill of Rights, the first 10 amendments. Unfortunately, the state of California has enacted a law in its inferior constitution that permits public officials, judges, law enforcement officers, whom you all pay, to violate the United States Constitution. As a result, there is an inordinate amount of people currently imprisoned in this state illegally and unconstitutionally. Chanawha Downing is litigating this issue at the United States Supreme Court. And I'm here to notify you that if you continue to pay public officials to break the law, criminal sanctions can come from that. Officials must be made aware that paying people to disobey the law is an emolument violation. It is illegal, it is unconstitutional, and it is a crime. I'm asking you individuals to please take a look at Clause 1, Amendment 5, confirm what I'm saying to be true, and then direct your public officials to act in a lawful constitutional manner consistent with the obligations that are codified in the United States Constitution. I have something for the record.
Thank you.
That was our only folks speaking.
Okay, great. So with that, we'll move forward to the consent agenda. And so if you have an item on the consent agenda that you would like to provide public comment, now is the time to turn in your slip to the City Clerk. To my fellow colleagues, anything you need or would like to pull, Councilmember Marks?
Yes, Item 6G, I'd like to just pull it for more information and also deliberation from our council.
Sounds good. I believe that the Utilities Department head will be sharing some information about that. Without anyone else, there's nothing else to pull, Vice Mayor?
I just want to make sure that, Jan, that Councilmember Marks is meaning to do a separate vote on that item because that's what I would like, please.
Okay, sounds good. Well, with that. Well, with that, then we'll move forward with only 6G to do a little brief presentation. Then we'll, of course, have questions from the council and public comment. And then we'll move back to the rest of the consent agenda. Hold on one second.
Just all at the end? Okay.
We're going a little out of order, so just wanted to not throw my City Clerk completely for a new one. All right, with that, Mr. Floyd, will you please press the button? Thank you so much. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Aaron Floyd, interim Public Works Director. I am joined this evening by our subject matter experts in this item for 6G, Madeline Cusenta and Dana Eby, who would, if the council is okay with it, would like to give about a three-slide presentation or so, maybe a couple more than that. Just because I think a little bit of visualization would really be a helpful reference for this item for sharing and clarifying for our council and community what is intended here. So with that, if I could ask them to give the presentation, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Thank you, that's a great idea. We received quite a few emails from the community and wanted to make sure we can help provide more clarity. So thank you, Councilmember Marks.
Thank you, Erin, and good evening, council members. My name is Dana Eby, and I'm a transportation planner engineer in the Public Works Department. And we were just going to give a brief overview of the key questions we received from council members. And then we can address any follow-up questions and discuss any specific design elements. Okay, so to give a brief overview of the key questions that we received on the Grand Avenue Sign and Striping Project, the first question that we received was regarding, regarding the northbound queuing at the Grand Avenue and Slack Street intersection. And so to give a little bit of background on that concern, this queuing concern was first brought to our attention by Cal Poly, members of the community, and Slow Classical Academy and Teach Elementary School. And so in response, staff conducted several in-person observations in the field, as well as video observations over extended periods of time in the evening and weekend hours during Cal Poly special events. And what we observed from those observations was primarily in the morning commute, peak hour, specifically between 7:50 and 8:05 in the morning, we observed traffic queuing back past the McCollum intersection and even to the US 101 freeway ramps. And so that was what we observed earlier this year. And then in response, we conducted some follow-up observations earlier this month, as well as as recent as this morning, just to confirm that that's what we're currently seeing. And so I was just going to share some images from our observations this morning. As you can see, the, I'm not sure. Okay, I think you can see my mouse. So this sign here is the pedestrian crossing at the McCollum intersection. And as you can see, traffic queued back to the US 101 freeway on ramps. And so in response to the safety concern, staff is recommending as part of the Grand Avenue sign and striping modifications to, we're recommending to re-stripe Grand Avenue to two northbound lanes. You can see where there's currently two northbound auto lanes currently here to the left. And so these modifications would extend these two lanes to the McCollum intersection to provide some additional storage length. And so that brings up our second question. And that was the question on whether the Grand Avenue Sign and Striping Project, if this is more of a pilot project, or if they're permit design improvements. And we just want to clarify that all aspects and all design elements, as proposed in this modifications project, they will be constructed using temporary low-cost materials. And so they're considered a pilot project. And we will continue to monitor conditions and conduct further outreach, including presentations to the ATC and council and community meetings before we construct permit design street changes in 2027. And so then our third question that I'll touch on today was about why costs are higher than anticipated. And so I'll bring up some summary bid results. So originally, we brought this additional work to the 2024 roadway ceiling contractor. And they did not wish to proceed with this additional work. So we then bid this work publicly. And as you can see from the summary tables here, the engineer's estimate was approximately $130,000, where all of our bid results from the first time we bid it, as well as the second time we bid this work, significantly exceeded the engineer's estimate. And we just wanted to provide some context that although this is significantly more than the engineer's estimate, this is generally consistent with what we're seeing with smaller striping projects. And that's just likely due to increased mobilization costs with smaller projects, as well as the availability of local striping contractors. And then lastly, we received some questions regarding the Grand and Loomis US 101 southbound on-ramp intersection design. I'm happy to go through quickly what those design elements are. Perfect, okay. So at this intersection, first I'll just describe the changes from this westbound view. So as you're approaching the intersection from the Loomis approach here, we currently have a right-turn-only sign posted, as well as a right-turn-only pavement markings. However, we've observed several times that drivers are attempting to navigate around the flex posts to continue straight onto the southbound on-ramp or turn left onto southbound Grand. And in response to this illegal and unsafe turning movement, we're proposing to install four additional flex posts to prevent this illegal turning movement. And so, and then from the southbound view of these changes, you can see these, what those four additional flex posts would look like in the proposed configuration image. And then I just wanted to also provide, give some context on the other changes at this intersection. So we had received a concern from the Love to Learn preschool that they were observing high southbound speeds, specifically drivers that would be driving southbound on Grand Avenue and turning right onto the freeway on-ramps at very high speeds. And so originally, the intent of the current configuration was for drivers to safely merge into this dedicated right-turn lane, be able to slow down and brake, and then turn right onto the freeway on-ramp. However, from in-person observations, we were observing that instead of using this intersection as designed and as intended, drivers instead were choosing to not merge into the dedicated right-turn lane. And we're performing this movement from the through lane. And so we're proposing as, for this project, to remove the dedicated right-turn lane and increase the width of the striped corner bulbout. And hopefully, this will facilitate more consistent driver behavior at this intersection. That's all we have prepared. Are there any questions?
Probably quite a few. Just to make sure I understand this correctly, the, in the proposed configuration, looking at the four additional flex posts, those are the flex posts that people will not go onto 101, not additional posts to the left to take a left, right?
Yes, you will still be able to take a left onto Loomis. So yeah, you can take a left from southbound Grand onto Loomis. These flex posts are simply just a different view of those.
Just making sure, yep, thank you. And then I didn't see anything in the report about, has any communication happened with Cal Poly in the realm specifically of when leaving Cal Poly, trying to kind of have some sort of, there's a better way to say it, I know, but paint on the ground that kind of starts to whittle that arrow, or sorry, that right lane to say like, it's going towards one. Because people often go into two and think they're going to now be able to go into two lanes, and then it all of a sudden turns into one. And they don't see until you get into the city side of Grand that there's not a second lane to go into.
Yeah, great observation there. I'll pull up the design plans here. We are revising some of the signage to more clearly delineate that you need to merge down to one lane. And then I'll also note that there are some flex posts that were currently removed due to some concerns from the Slow Classical Academy. So just to kind of summarize their concern, originally, the flex posts on the southbound Grand approach were installed more in the middle of the bike buffer area. And often, parents that were picking up their children, they weren't able to fully pull into the bike buffer area to allow like a larger fire engine or, yeah, a larger vehicle to pass. And so we met with Slow Classical Academy, and their preference was for us to relocate the flex posts just a little bit closer to the curb. So that way, drivers would be able to fully pull into that bike buffer area while waiting to then turn into the Slow Classical Academy driveway. And so in this like interim period right now, these flex posts are currently removed. But with this project, they would be reinstalled just a little bit closer to the curb area. So hopefully, that would also provide an additional like visual element that it's one lane in the city side.
That makes sense, thank you. And going back to the four posts that are going towards, to stop someone from going to 101 across the Grand, will those have some extra bright color or reflective posts? Because at nighttime, some of those posts you can't see on Grand.
Yeah, all of the current flex posts, as well as all of the proposed flex posts, have retroreflective wraps. And so that hopefully provides some nighttime visibility. But if there's any that poses a specific concern, please let staff know. And we're happy to maintain and replace those wraps as they may wear away.
Okay, sounds good. I'll let staff know later. Okay, Councilmember Francis?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, it's okay.
Thank you so much for the additional information. I really appreciate it. I'm kind of curious if you can explain what the re-striping achieves, particularly as you are northbound on, on Grand Avenue, entering into the Cal Poly campus or by the Slowca campus there. Does it theoretically make the traffic flow more quickly through there? Or with it going from two lanes to one, is there additional movement? Or does it just shorten the amount of queuing? Can you just kind of talk about like the outcomes?
Yes, so, so if two northbound auto lanes are provided for a little bit longer, that would hopefully reduce the lengths of the queues that we're seeing. And so instead of like drivers queuing up back to the freeway on-ramps, with two lanes provided, there would be additional storage length for them to queue in this area. As far as like operational benefits, just from firsthand observations, we're noticing that like as currently designed this, this approach with the two auto lanes, both lanes aren't always highly utilized with it being such a short length. And so by bringing back the storage length to McCollum, the hope is that like there's a more utilized, or like each of the two lanes are more utilized so that like when two drivers approach the stop sign and it's clear for them to pass, that two cars are able to go at once. Rather than what we're kind of observing now is it's kind of this like wig-wag, inconsistent through movement.
So do we have evidence that it would sort of expedite movement through that intersection? Or does it just simply shorten how far back the cars are backing up?
I would say both. It would shorten how far the cars are backing up. And then just from firsthand experience, I've personally noticed that both of the northbound lanes aren't very well utilized, just with it being such a short storage length. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Marks, and then Vice Mayor will get to you.
Thank you. No, I really appreciate this, this more in-depth explanation and also the photos of the actual place. Like my husband and I did spend a couple hours just cruising around this area with the plans on his computer I was driving. It's like trying to figure out, okay, here's the plan. What's the deal? Just for the average councilperson, but maybe the average resident and student is like, these plans are very important, but sometimes translating them into reality, like what is actually out there. So this really helps me understand. I have to say that safety in this area is totally important. It's, we've had unfortunate, unfortunately, some student injuries and even, even a fatality in this area. So it's, it's really important, and I really back it. But the, this plan, and the way it is now, is controversial. We're hearing from a lot of different people. And one group is the bicycle people, who don't like having that little portion of their bike path taken away by the establishment of the second storage area, you're calling it. So can you explain what the bicyclists actually can do if they're trying to get to Cal Poly? If that were eliminated, what would the impact on the bicyclists and the pedestrians be?
Yeah, of course. So I'll pull up the proposed design plans. So...
Cal Poly's on the left.
So this is Cal Poly's property here. And this is the northbound approach of Grand Avenue. And so as shown on the design plans, as, so let's say if I were a cyclist approaching Cal Poly from northbound Grand Avenue. Oh, perfect, thank you. So if I were a cyclist, I'll just kind of take you through what the bicycle facilities would look like. And so we aren't totally eliminating bicycle facilities. There would still be, I believe it's a six-foot bike lane and a two-foot buffer area between the bike lane and the driver lane. And that would be provided all the way north. So from McCollum to the Slack Street intersection. And we would also still be providing some corner bulbouts at the Grand and Hayes intersection. And then if we just continue on north here, we would see some green bike lane dashing approaching the intersection, as well as a corner bulbout at the Grand and Slack intersection. I would say the pedestrian experience remains similar or the same. However, there are, as I mentioned, these... However, there are, as I mentioned, these corner bulb outs that will still be provided to reduce pedestrian crossing exposure. And I'll also just mention too, there we are proposing to retain one vehicle lane going northbound on the northbound to the McCollum intersection. And the intent of that is two lanes are provided after the McCollum crosswalk. And so there would only be one like driver lane going into the crosswalk. So there would not be increased pedestrian exposure there.
At McCollum?
Correct.
Good. Okay, thank you very much. This really helps me understand.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you so much. Gosh, you all asked some great questions and so it knocked off a couple off my list. But just piggybacking off of what Councilmember Marks just said, if you could go back to the page that shows the actual intersection at Slack and Grand. Just overhead view. There you go. So you know, I'm just going to push back a little bit and clarify with you. You said the pedestrian experience compared to what is present now is relatively unchanged between what is present now and this design. But isn't it true that now with this design, there will be two intersection, there will be two collision points essentially going into campus instead of right now, there's only one lane of traffic on the city side of the intersection. So there's only going northbound, there's only potential to get, I'm just going to be blunt, to get hit by one car because there's one lane of traffic. But now there's two, isn't that?
Good question. There actually are two northbound lanes currently provided. It's just for a very short distance. So I think maybe this map shows that a little bit better. So there are currently two northbound lanes from Slack, let's say 100 or so feet. South. And so the revised design would be the same at the Grand and Slack intersection.
That's right. Okay, now I remember I just, yeah, that was the original, I think the original recommendation from the ATC was to go down to one lane and it does not do that, right? Okay, I remember that now. Okay, so my only other question was in the agenda correspondence, which I really appreciate you guys putting that out. I asked some pretty specific questions about when and how frequently the queuing issues have occurred. And you said, I think it says staff observed that during the heaviest, and you referred to this in your comments, staff observed the heaviest during the heaviest 10 to 15 minutes on the weekday morning commute typically between 8:00 and 8:15 a.m. Northbound vehicle queues routinely extended from Cal Poly entrance back to Loomis Street. That's with the shorter, the current existing section approaching the Slack intersection that only has two lanes. And then it goes one lane before you get to McCollum. And then it says on several occasions, the queuing approached the US 101 ramp. But it doesn't, it just says several occasions. Do you have any better estimate of what several occasions means? Is it like occasionally? It sounds like occasionally it gets back and during really busy times or during events is how I read that.
Yeah, I would say from what we observed earlier this year between January and March, we observed, for some reason, we found that certain days of the week had a little bit heavier of traffic for whatever reason with like classes at Cal Poly. And so I think we observed like Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, traffic always backed up to the freeway ramps were more on Mondays and Fridays. It was more in the Loomis range. I was personally out there this morning and traffic did back up to the US 101 freeway ramps as shown in these images provided here.
And that was for about a 15 minute period of time-ish? Or it was only that long for a lesser portion of that?
I would say that the traffic backed up to the McCollum intersection for about the 15 minute range where it backed up to the freeway ramps for closer to like five or so minutes.
Okay, thanks. I know I'm asking you to estimate really hard things.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks. That's all my questions.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll move on to is there any public comment on 6G? I know I saw some emails, but.
No, there was not.
Okay. So with that, we'll bring you back to deliberation. Thank you so much for adding this last minute. And is there any other comments from my colleagues before we vote? Councilmember Marks?
Yes, I will be supporting the staff recommendation after this wonderful explanation. Now that I understand it, I have a rule never to vote on anything I don't understand.
Thank you. I think that's all of our rules. I would say I very much support this and also really encourage more reflective tape and maybe bright yellow. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
I didn't know that was your still your hand from before. Sorry about that.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to put it down before, but it was needed to go back up again. Yeah, so I I am not going to be supporting this. And it's not because the roadway doesn't need very desperately some of the improvements that are proposed. My main concern is that McCollum, that section of converting the the one lane back to two for the longer stretch of time. Grand Avenue is a roadway that's seen a lot of crashes over time. And I myself have had several near misses along the Grand Avenue corridor. And in 2023, as Councilmember Marks mentioned, we lost Sean Hillman, a first year Cal Poly student who was killed on a different section of the roadway. And thankfully, we're considering addressing some of the issues that may have improved circumstances for Sean. But I think this is a critical piece of roadway that is along the route to to preschools and to elementary schools. And Cal Poly, not the least of them, is very important as well. And I think we owe it to our community and to all those students who are using this roadway and parents to make it as safe as we possibly can. And I walk and ride this section multiple times a day. My husband told me he rode it six times last week and it has become a very comfortable stretch of road for cyclists. And I'm concerned that we are sacrificing safety of cyclists and creating a more comfortable roadway by taking the longer stretch from all the way from Slack to McCollum, turning that back to two lanes against the recommendations of the Active Transportation Committee. So while I totally understand how frustrating queuing in your car can be, I drive my car on this stretch of road many times a week as well. And I agree that it can be quite frustrating to have to sit in traffic. However, the safety of our community members and the inconvenience of queuing for a 15 minute period of time during the day is not worth the safety that we are potentially sacrificing for people that are riding or walking along the stretch. So I know that there has been a lot of community engagement of it in this and there's going to be more because this isn't even the last go around with this because we will be doing a more extensive community outreach and paving plan in 2027. So I am a little concerned about the money that we're spending on this too and we're going to go go ahead and potentially change it in another year and a half or two. So I just really, I appreciate all the work that staff has done on this. I know there will continue to be more. I know that driving and queuing in your car is frustrating, but I think the safety considerations for everybody else who's using the roadway just far outweigh the 15 minute, 10 to 15 minute lag time that someone might have to, that we all might have to sit in our cars in order to make the road safer for everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Boswell.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Shoresman, for those comments. I am going to support the staff recommendation, but it is bothersome that we are kind of in this situation of having to make this trade off. I do look forward to when we're going to move forward with the more permanent infrastructure changes. I think we ought to, and while we're also looking at the permanent design changes in the next couple of years, that we also are investigating ways to better manage queue here, possibly using more active management of the intersection going into Cal Poly during high queuing times. So I certainly, I think to some extent, when we do these pilots, they're a little bit of a compromise anyways with trying to enhance bicycle and pedestrian safety because they're not a permanent solution. They're there to test ideas. So I do hope we can get good data now. We'll have kind of an A B test. We'll have two different configurations of two different intersections and we can understand how those are performing. But I do hope when this comes back, we can figure out a more innovative way to address queuing than simply providing additional car stacking. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Francis?
Yes, thank you to everybody for your comments and Vice Mayor Shoresman for articulating my thoughts so well. I really struggled with this one a little bit. You know, we've got a queuing issue that is causing delays for 20 minutes, three, four times a week, but really I'm not hearing that it's creating a safety issue at this point. And then with the additional information that we're looking at, you know, permanent restriping in 2027 feels like we're spending an incredible amount of money for a small change that doesn't necessarily achieve safety goals. And so I will not be supporting this today. And yeah, I think that's it.
All right, thank you. And Vice Mayor, I do appreciate a lot of what you've shared today. I remember when this first came to us originally, we were all very nervous about Grand and what this entire striping project was going to be like. At that time, I remember asking about this as a pilot program, right? We're checking, we're seeing, we're evaluating, we're updating, and this is another moment in evaluating and updating. I do use this intersection off and on. And I'm pleased that it is not a safety issue in the sense that no one's been, there's no collision or death that's happened at this point in time from this current pilot program. I will say it is a bit like double dutch jump rope because you are like, should I go? Should I not? Should I go? Should I not? And that's why I was asking about the actual arrows on the road or dotted lines saying it's starting to go in because I actually am more fearful of the fact that it's not very clear. Like it's a stop sign, both people go, it's really clear versus right now, people do this weird, should I go or should I not? And I think for pedestrians, that's actually more unsafe the way we currently have it. So I'm glad that there's been no harm at this time, but that does concern me. So I'm excited, not excited, but I'm interested to see where this will continue to evolve the next steps. Does this next change help or not help as much? It will be something that I look forward to the data as you heard from us today. So tell us more, how many minutes, how many people, what is this looking like, how many vehicles? You know, I think that will be helpful as we continue to make these decisions. And I know when we are looking at a permanent plan in '27, and that's what these quick bills, these pilot programs were for, which was to understand what we should do next in the next phase, the next phase. While I don't love that $130,000 is now $229,000 or $25,000, there has not been a single thing that's been brought to us or pretty much any other place in the U.S. that prices have gone down. So that's not really surprising, unfortunately. So I will support this because I want to continue to see this improve, evolve, and make this an intersection that will move smoothly for all mobility, not just cars, not just bikes, but and not just pedestrians, but everyone. And I really hope with this, I remember last time the timing was not great to get input from both preschools, teach, SLOCA, Cal Poly students and faculty and staff. So I just really, as we get to '27, being a more permanent, that we could get more input from people will be really helpful. You have some people in the audience that might be able to help you get some information back for the future. With that, Councilmember Marks?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your your comments. And I'm glad it's a pilot project at this point. And I hope that staff will continue to do in-person observation. You know, I lived in that area for many years on Albert Drive. I'm quite familiar with the area. One thing I wanted to mention is that the Classical Academy is in the process of purchasing a large campus, excuse me, I believe on Broad Street. And so it's possible that there will actually be fewer parents picking up kids and all that between now and 2027. And they're trying to accomplish it by next year if they can. So with that, I would like to move the staff recommendation for item 6G, awarded construction contract for the Grand Avenue sign and striping modifications.
Thank you. I'll second. Citi, clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis? Councilmember Boswell? Sorry. Vice Mayor Shoresman?
Vice Mayor?
No.
Thank you. All right, so that passes 3-2. And thank you very much for your extra report. And we'll move back to the consent agenda for all items and the consent agenda not including 6G since we have voted for that. Councilmember Marks?
I'd like to move the staff recommendation on the on the consent agenda with the exception of 6G, which you've already voted on.
Mayor, public comment?
Oh, thank you. So sorry about that. Do we have any public comment for items on the consent agenda?
Yes, we do. We have one on item 6D and 6E. Jack Lee.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, Council. I just wanted to make comment on the priorities laid out by the HRC Council and the CBDG grant recommendations to support them. Seeing that homelessness is a priority in both of these groups is heartening for the work that we're doing at Capsule 140 Prado. And just give some gravity to the numbers or give give some gravity to the recommendation and the impact. I was going to share some numbers with you all on what we've been doing this year because we are currently receiving funding from the both of these funding sources currently for operations in Capsule. So so far this year, we've housed 284 household or individuals into housing from all our programs. We've served 6,400 and, sorry, 6,394 meals at Prado. We've served 1,428 individuals and provided shelter to 881 individuals. And those individuals are individual adults and families with children. Specifically at Prado, this, we are able to provide the only warming center in Slow City. We provide safe parking, which is the only safe parking program currently in the county. We provide a recuperative care program, which is the only recuperative care program in the county. And I'm highlighting those just to say the impact of prioritizing homelessness and the impact of those funds at Prado have really allowed us to leverage unique programs that serve the entire county at 40 Prado. So I want to thank you for considering keeping those recommendations of priority intact. And wanted to also just highlight that currently 40 Prado is the only night by night shelter option in the entire county. option in the entire county. Our provider partners in the north have recently eliminated their night-by-night shelter option. So if somebody is looking for a night of shelter anywhere in the county, usually it's going to be Prado now that they would look for shelter. All of the other programs, including ours, a portion of it, are on a 90-day referral program, which has a waitlist. Our night-by-night bed program unfortunately is lottery-style, but it allows people to receive shelter that very night upon request. So it is, just want to thank you to support the priority of homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you just give us that number one more time for the meals with 603,094 meals? And what was the second number?
Sorry, 64,394 meals. And then individuals served, that includes access center, shelter, all of our services, 1,428. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention, in the meals, in addition to the 64,000, is 22,000 People's Kitchen lunches that are provided every lunch at Prado by People's Kitchen.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, no further speakers.
All right, no further speakers. So with that, we are back to deliberation. Any comments? Councilmember Francis?
No comment. I was going to second Councilmember Marks's motion.
Wonderful. So we have a motion from Councilmember Marks and a second from Councilmember Francis. City Clerk, can we have roll call?
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Boswell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shoresman?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, and the motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much. With that, it is 7 o'clock. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back to public hearing and business items. All right, thanks all for the break. Back to business. We have public hearing, Item 7A, to authorize staff to hire a CalPERS retired annuitant for a temporary period due to an approved leave of absence. So with Director Timmy Twain, I hand it off to you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is a brief item. I do not have a PowerPoint, but the item before you is to consider a resolution for the temporary hiring of Donald Wright, a retired annuitant, for the plans examiner position in the Community Development Department. We need to maintain essential services while a regular employee, who is our plans examiner, is out on an approved leave from approximately mid-November to early February. And in accordance with the government code and consistent with CalPERS requirements, this resolution needs to be presented to the City Council and then passed on to CalPERS for approval. This is a newer law, and so in the past, we've just filled these positions in as needed. So you wouldn't have heard from me, but this, we are complying with this new state law. Mr. Wright brings extensive experience. He's worked at our counter for many years. He knows every local developer, probably. He knows all of staff. He'd be an excellent fit. And bringing a retired annuitant in for this short amount of time allows us to maintain these services at a much better cost than bringing in an outside consultant, who we would also have to train up on a lot of our local regulations. So this action fully complies with the CalPERS requirements. He will work under the 960-hour limit, receive no additional bonuses or benefits, and his employment will end when the regularly employed person is back from their leave. And so with that, I'm available for questions. Director Dominey is available for questions from HR, and my recommendation is to adopt a resolution entitled, "Resolution of the City Council, the City of San Luis Obispo Pointing Donald Wright to Provide Specialized Building Plan Review Services During the Temporary Absence of a Plans Examiner Pursuant to Government Code Section 21221G." Thank you.
Thank you so much. I always wonder what the difference is between a retired annuitant versus a rehired annuitant, but I think really it's potato-potato as far as public government. So with that, moving on to any other questions, public comment?
We don't have Vice Mayor on.
Oh, thank you so much. So sorry. We will pause on that and find our Vice Mayor.
I'm so sorry. I was here. I just forgot to turn my camera back on.
Phew. So did you hear the report about the retired annuitant from CalPERS?
I did. I just had my, I had my agenda up, so I couldn't see you all.
No problem. Just wanted to make sure. Do you have any questions for Director Twain?
No questions or concerns. Thank you.
All right. Any public comment, City Clerk?
None.
None. So will anyone like to make a motion? Councilmember Francis?
I would like to move approval of the staff recommendation.
Wonderful. Is there a second?
I'd like to second it.
Councilmember Marks? And can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Boswell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shoresman?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much. And well, with that, we'll move on to 7B. We'll have, sorry, we'll receive a report regarding the city completed sidewalk improvements required by a formal notice to correct. And with that, we have interim Public Works Director Erin Floyd and Deputy Director of Public Works Greg Cruz.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am joined, as Mayor Stewart said, by Greg Cruz, Deputy Director of Public Works. We do have a short presentation for you this evening, and then we will follow that up with some questions, if you have any, and then we'll move right into the recommendation from there, if you're willing to hear that. With that, Greg, if you are ready, sir? Well, it looks great on our side, but that's really not helping you or the community at all on this one. So if you can give us...
Sing.
No, I certainly cannot sing. That would...
Did I hear the Deputy Chief Amoroso can sing? That's wonderful.
And Mayor and Council, I brought Brian Amoroso here to provide entertainment for the community while...
This is happening!
We've got to have a little fun during these meetings. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you to the City Clerk and to Brian Amoroso for our comic relief there.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Greg Cruz, Public Works Director, Maintenance Operations for the Public Works Department. Got a brief presentation tonight for confirmation of work completion reports for frontage improvements, replacements required by notice to corrects. It's a brief preview of the recommendations that I'll bring up at the conclusion of our, conclusion of the tonight's presentation. The first few slides are a brief refresher for the council this evening. The city's adopted the Streets and Highways Code, which states the owners of lots or portions of lots, frontage any portion of a public street or place that is improved, shall maintain any sidewalk in a condition that the sidewalk shall not endanger any person, property, and maintain in a condition which will not interfere with public convenience. The code is only applicable to existing improvements and does not apply to the installation of new improvements. The one exception to this code is if the improvement is damaged by a city street tree, then the city would be responsible for the repair or replacement of the improvements. The city becomes aware of damaged sidewalks through the different avenues, including the city sidewalk inspection program. This program, in this program, the Streets Maintenance inspects the city's nine payment zones in sequential order, takes approximately one year to complete the inspection and repairs in each zone, which means Zones 1 through 8 are inspected approximately every eight years, and Zone 9 downtown being inspected annually prior to the holiday season, along with areas of adjacent sidewalks next to the hospitals in town, as well as the city senior center. Staff is also made aware of sidewalk issues by community members, reporting through ASLO or other forms of communication. When Streets Maintenance becomes aware of a sidewalk issue, staff will inspect the area and perform temporary repairs when possible. These repairs consist of grinding, ramping, and patching of the damaged sections of sidewalk when appropriate. Because the Streets and Highways Code does not list thresholds for damage, the city uses thresholds identified in the city's inspection program to determine if a sidewalk is out of compliance. This document identifies vertical displacements greater than 3/4 of an inch, sidewalk slopes that exceed 5 to 1 or 20%, and cracks or holes with gaps of 1/2 inch or greater as deficiencies that need to be corrected. There are times when the level of deterioration is so great that replacement is the only option. When a sidewalk is identified as needing a correction, the Public Works Department will send an informal notice to correct to start the process. Also, based on council feedback earlier this year, staff has revised a notice in scope of work documents within the, with the assistance of the city attorney's office, as well as the FAQ on the city's website and the sidewalk brochure that is included in all notices and handed out to community members during sidewalk, during site visits. On May 20th of this year, the city council authorized the public works staff to issue formal notices to five properties for deteriorated sidewalk frontage improvements. Three of the five properties completed the work privately through their selected contractors, and the owners of two properties acknowledged the requirements and requested the city to complete the work due to contractor scheduling conflicts and financial restraints. The city contractor completed the repairs to the adjacent two properties on August 12. Staff sent notice of public hearing to the two property owners on September 8, which included the work completion reports. On September 29, the city received a full reimbursement for the, one of the two completed locations. Remaining property to discuss this evening is the work completed adjacent to 878 Islay Street, and Attachment B within the council agenda report for this evening includes that work completion report. The specific property, for the specific property, the adjacent work completed was removal and replacement of 189 square feet of sidewalk, 24 square feet of asphalt patching within the street, temporary traffic control measures, well, the work required closure of the public right-of-way for the work, and a significant amount of tree roots that needed to be removed underneath the former sidewalk, which was a contributing factor to the deteriorated sidewalk. The replacement and removal of the sidewalk and the driveway approach was installed in compliance with city standards and ADA requirements, and the total cost for the work was $17,166.59. I do want to reiterate, shortly after the first site visit with the property owner, he requested the city to complete the work and the cost to be leaned against the property. As required by the Streets and Highways Code, upon completion of the repair, the Public Works Department shall prepare and file with the council a report specifying the repairs that have been made, the cost of the repairs, a description of the real property adjacent to the completed repairs, and an assessment against the parcel of land proposed to be levied by the, levied to pay the cost. This specific information can be found in the work completion, work completion report included as Attachment B of this evening's council agenda report. During this public hearing, council shall hear and confirm the report of the Public Works Department, together with any objections or protests which may be raised by the property owner, to be assessed for the work and any other interested parties. The council may make revisions, corrections, or modifications in the report as it deems appropriate. After by wedge of motion and resolution, or resolution, the report submitted or revised, corrected, or modified shall be confirmed. Following council's confirmation, the work completion report, confirmation of the work completion report, public work staff will update the property owner on the final determination. After notification, the property owner will have five days to pay the assessment. If the property owner fails to pay the assessment during this time, a special assessment will be filed in the form of a lien with the county recorder's office. It's common for a special assessment to include interest. The Streets and Highways Code does not specify an interest rate for this type of lien. However, Section 1212 of the Minnesota Code, which offers an alternative method for this process, has a predetermined interest rate of 10%, which was the basis of the interest rate included in the proposed lien found in Attachment C. Similar to the work completion report, council has the authority to modify the interest rate within the lien from 0 to 12%. So this concludes my brief presentation. I'm available to answer any questions, and I will return to the recommendations for council preview.
Thank you so much. That was a concise report, and really appreciate seeing the pictures of the completion. Looks safer and looks more attractive, so good combination of both. With that, any questions from my colleagues? Vice Mayor?
Thanks. Yes, I did want to ask a question, and you queued me up nicely for it, a question about the interest. 10%, I know interest rates, home loan interest rates are high right now, but I, and I maybe should have done a little bit of homework myself, but I wonder if 10% seems, seems really high to me. Wondering if we have any access to information about what home equity loan rates or things like that that might be used to do home repairs or things like that, and if we could adjust to something that, if lower than 10% is more, more standard. Any thoughts on that?
Mr. Floyd appears to be looking up some rates as we speak. Unfortunately, I apologize, I did not look into the similar type of rates for home equity line of credit or anything in comparison.
Yeah, like I said, I probably should have done that. But I guess that gets me around to the question of wondering if my colleagues would be interested in trying to make this a little bit more affordable. I think it was a big expense for these folks already, and as long as they're paying for the work that was done, I would be agreeable, potentially, if others are, to an adjustment in the rate. That's all I have.
Thank you. I think we'll figure that out while we're going for more questions and potential public comments, and come right back to you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Francis?
That went away. Okay, never mind. Her question was answered. So in that very short period of time, were you able to find anything else? I'm looking at HELOC rates real quick.
Yeah. So the brief overview I found is a little over 8% on a five- or 10-year term right now is average home equity loan rates.
Nice, thank you. That's what I saw as well. I mean, I'm happy to look at a little bit of break if we can help our community member out, because I know that was part of the reason why they said, "Go ahead and put a lien," because I can't do it financially. So I'm definitely open to that, if my colleagues are. Councilmember Francis?
Perhaps you can clarify that with the lien being filed, that this interest then would be charged in perpetuity if he's unable to pay it off in the interim?
Right. So it's not compounding interest, it'd be simple interest on the loan, or on the lien, excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great question. Any other comments? Question, Councilmember Marks?
No.
Okay, I thought you had a question. All right, with that, any public comment?
No, there's not.
Okay. Going back to council, Vice Mayor, did you want to propose a particular amount for an amendment to the recommended potential motion?
I don't know how, quite how to do this without taking some time and doing a little bit more research. I guess if there's, I mean, I guess I could pull a number out of air, like Director Floyd suggested, 8%, but I would feel better about having a little bit more information before proposing a rate. But I'm open to other suggestions that my colleagues have.
I believe Councilmember Francis has a comment.
Yeah, thank you very much. My gut went straight to kind of just covering inflation here, and it looks like the average core inflation rate was 3.62% between 1957 and 2025, obviously much higher at this point. But looking at something that's in line with average inflation over the long term at 4% or 5% seems reasonable, maybe closer to 4, just to accommodate this resident who... or 5% seems reasonable, maybe closer to four, just to accommodate this resident who obviously could use a little assistance at this moment.
I'm wondering if there's a way that we can move forward this motion with a little bit of instruction around finding the CPI from staff to come back to us with, or do we want to go ahead and table this while some amounts can be found and come back to it later on this evening? What's staff's thoughts on this?
We could do either of that. I would also maybe seek a little bit of guidance here from my city manager and city attorney on this, but I believe the recommendation could also be, I mean, really, this is, council does have purview here from zero to 12%. So I mean, any of these are totally within your purview at that point. If you wanted to give direction that we use something similar to Councilmember Francis's suggestion, maybe we go back 30 years and look at average CPI, or something of that nature, that any of those directions would totally work for staff, and I believe would be an appropriate recommendation, that I do not believe we would have to come back after that.
Great, figured that would be important in this case. Councilmember Marks?
Yeah, I personally would think that the idea of the average home equity loan would make more sense, because although CPI keeps going up, also home equity keeps going up. I mean, the house is worth more now than it was when it was originally purchased. So, yeah, I mean, could we just say, you know, and interest at the average rate of a home equity loan in 2025?
I'd feel okay with that. If you wanted to make that motion, I bet you'd give a second.
Okay, yes, I'd make that motion.
Wonderful. Be happy to second that. Can we have roll call?
Comment?
I believe the city manager has a comment.
Sorry, I didn't see your light. City manager?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I believe there is a maximum that we are allowed to include as interest, so we just want, we don't want to exceed that. I just want to clarify for the motion that whatever that rate would be would not exceed the maximum, which I believe was indicated as 12%.
Yes, but in the recommendation was 10%, so it definitely wouldn't be over the 10%. We're, we're trying to get a decrease from the 10%. So if the average-
We just need that in the motion.
Okay, so if the average HELOC is lower than, home equity loan is lower than 10%, that's what we are suggesting. Does that work? Vice Mayor?
I like that idea.
Okay. All right, going back to councilmember Marks.
I move the, excuse me, I move the staff recommendation with an interest rate lower than 10% set at the average rate of a home equity loan in 2025, either 10% or the rate of a home equity loan, the average home equity loan in our area in 2025, whichever is lower. Okay, all right.
Councilmember Francis?
Yeah. Thank you. Honestly, you know, this community member seems to need a little financial assistance right now, and the average HELOC is at the 7% to 10% rate right now, so we're not actually giving a pretty, you know, a significant cut to that 10% recommendation. I would be more comfortable with something in the 5% or under range, if I can get a second on that.
So you're making amendment to the motion to 7%?
I'm not clear what the motion is.
Yeah, councilmember Marks, do you wish for that friendly amendment, or would you like us to vote this one and come back to wherever we go?
I'm open to the friendly amendment of 5%.
Okay, thank you. So councilmember Francis, did you have additional? Okay, great. So at this point, city clerk, I believe our, our motion is for a 5% recommendation for the interest, and otherwise, we're moving forward with rest of staff recommendation. Can we have roll call?
Can I just clarify, so the, the actual motion is now just a flat 5% interest rate for the individual? It's not based on CPI or home equity rates?
Unfortunately, no, it is just a random amount.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Marks? Yes. Mayor Stewart?
I'm not the second.
Who's the second?
Councilmember Francis was the second.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Boswell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shoresman?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
I very much support this, but I want it tied to something specific. It just very much concerns me as precedent, so I'm going to say no. It's not because I don't support this, so I'm just putting that out there. With that, the motion passes for one, and thank you very much, Mr. Floyd, Mr. Cruz, and from there, we will move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next is 7C. We have our annual public hearing for the Tourism Business Improvement District, also known as T-Bid, and I will say with this, it is a little more prescriptive as a public hearing item than the average public hearing items that we go through. At this point, we will have, or we do have Economic Development and Tourism Manager Laura Fiedler and the T-Bid Chair Clint Pierce to present the report. Thank you so much for being here.
All right, thank you, Mayor Stewart, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be back with you twice in one month to share with you what we've been working on with the San Luis Obispo Tourism Business Improvement District. And I'm very pleased to have with me Clint Pierce here, the president of Madonna Enterprise, as well as our T-Bid Board Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to present.
Okay. So this evening, we will, excuse me, present the report for the public hearing of the Tourism Business Improvement District, or T-Bid. The city conducts an annual two-part process to decide whether to continue the T-Bid. It is required within the city's municipal code that after the approval of the T-Bid annual report, the council adopts a resolution of intention to levy the annual assessment for that fiscal year, and then schedules a public hearing to receive any written or oral protest against the continuation of the district. Part one was conducted two weeks ago on October 7th, when your city council received and approved the fiscal year 2024-25 annual report for the T-Bid and adopted a resolution of intention to continue the T-Bid. Tonight is part two, our annual public hearing. So tonight, we will hold such a hearing with the recommendations that were included in your staff report, as well as are shown on the screen here, and we will take you through the following actions. The first being to conduct that public hearing to receive testimony regarding the city council's intention to continue the citywide T-Bid. Two, determine whether a legally sufficient protest is made. And then, three, if no legally sufficient protest is made, council is recommended to adopt a resolution affirming the continuation of the San Luis Obispo T-Bid, setting forth the basis for assessment and levying the assessment upon hotels in the district for fiscal year 2025-2026. And we covered this in a little bit more detail at our last city council meeting, but I'll just start with a brief background on the T-Bid, which this year is celebrating its 17th anniversary of district formation. The T-Bid is funded through a self-assessment on San Luis Obispo lodging industry of 2% of gross receipts, and the constituent base is made up of all transit occupancy tax-paying businesses in the city, which includes hotels, motels, inns, bed and breakfasts, and permitted homestay properties. The ordinance which formed the T-Bid was implemented according to the state's Streets and Highways Code, and it stipulates that the assessment must be used for tourism marketing to benefit hotel operators in the district. The use of the funding is recommended by a seven-member advisory board, appointed, excuse me, appointed by the city council, made up of lodging business owners, operators, and managers. And as we heard at the last assessment, we calculated their attendance just in meetings alone is 45 hours per year. I don't think tonight's attendance for Clint is counted in that total, but we're certainly appreciative always of the time that our advisory spends advising staff, as well as city council, on the T-Bid. So now let me turn it over to Clint, who's our chair, as I mentioned, to summarize our accomplishments from this past year, which we covered in more depth at our last meeting.
Thank you, Laura. Well, I'm pleased to be here to share another year of strong performance for the T-Bid and for the lodging industry. As Laura and Prashant shared with you, a few weeks ago, last fiscal year, the city collected a record-breaking $11.4 million in transient occupancy tax, or TOT, which goes to the city general fund to support services and programs that are important to the city, like open space, parks and recreation, et cetera. In January, Visit San Luis Obispo adopted the 2025 to 2030 strategic plan, which includes four key strategies. One, to ensure organizational excellence. Two, deliver smart growth. Three, build meaningful partnerships. And four, activate the Slow Life. We are already executing on that plan. In June, Visit San Luis Obispo launched the Slow Life Coach campaign, a bold evolution of our brand. Early results already show strong engagement with target audiences. We also evolved our midweek strategy, which aims to boost overnight stays Sunday through Thursday to be more evergreen. With the help of partner referrals, which are clicks through to the hotel websites, more than 56.7 million paid impressions, and 6.7 billion media impressions from public relations, the T-Bid was also proud to partner with EcoSlow and the city's Office of Sustainability and Natural Resources on our Keys for Trees program, where 1% of T-Bid revenue is directed to planting trees in San Luis Obispo. We also continued partnerships with Cal Poly, Klein Traveler, and the Gala Pride and Diversity Center. And lastly, our visitor center downtown, in partnership with the Slow Chamber of Commerce, welcomed 74,000 visitors. This all led to a strong year of performance and led to our T-Bid board to recommend to the city council to continue the T-Bid for another year. Thank you.
Great. So following the presentation of the T-Bid annual report on October 7th, your council adopted a resolution of intention to levy the annual T-Bid assessment and scheduled a public hearing to receive any written or oral protest against the district. By the start of the meeting tonight, the staff has received zero written protests. At the conclusion of the public hearing, if there are any additional protests made tonight and submitted, we will tally those for the city clerk to report the results. Mayor Stewart, I will now turn it over to you for questions and to open up the public hearing.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions from my fellow colleagues at this time? Vice Mayor? Okay. Without further ado, city clerk, will you share if we have any hoteliers in the room?
I have no public comment speakers.
And no public comment either?
Correct.
Great, okay. So with that, there's really no report, results to report, since you've already shared zero. So we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Councilmember Francis?
Yeah, thank you so much. Really appreciate you coming back tonight and sharing all of those details with us, and the fact that there are no protests, and I believe we heard earlier, there are no protests last year as well, right? I think that's a real testament to the quality of work that you all have been doing and the promotions that you've been putting out, and I just am so grateful for all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I think we can go ahead and move on for a motion. Is there a motion? Counts, no, just kidding. As recommended by the tourism, you want me to read the whole entire thing? Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm like, really? Vice Mayor?
Oh, I wasn't sure what was happening. I'll just comment real quick and just say thank you to Clint. I know this isn't his first rodeo, and he's been a longtime T-Bid volunteer off and on, and just really, I thank him and all the other volunteers for all the time and energy that they put in. I, I hope it pays you back in some way, either both as a sense of community, but obviously, as Councilmember Francis says, it literally pays everybody back in the industry as well. So thank you.
Well, thank you for those kind words. I'm proud to say that we have a full board, which it isn't always the case, and so we have strong constituent engagement. In fact, we've been having a biannual, semi-annual, I always get confused on bi or semi, anyway, twice a year, constituent get-together where we give some industry updates and just kind of bring everybody together socially also, and we've had huge, huge engagement. We've never really had that before. About two years ago, when we started doing this, we had a hard time getting our constituents, that's the other hoteliers in the city. A lot of them are small owner operators, are just too busy doing their daily work to, to be involved, but they've come out for this, and so I feel like we're stronger today than we've ever been. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. I very much remember in the last report with Prashant saying the entire board was full. That was really heartening to me, because as I've been, you know, the liaison a couple times to T-Bid, that wasn't always the case, so thank you very much. Well, with that, councilmember Marks, I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you. Yes, I'd just like to echo those positive comments and add that I really appreciate the sensitivity that T-Bid has to the natural areas around San Luis Obispo, and also the way that T-Bid really thinks about serving the community, as well as being astute businesspeople, which is very important. So I would like to move that we adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of San Luis Obispo, declaring the basis for and the levy of the assessment for the San Luis Obispo Tourism Business Improvement District, and affirming the establishment of the district for the coming year.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Boswell?
I'll second, and just also wanted to thank Clint and the T-Bid board for all the excellent work they've been doing.
Thank you for that. City clerk?
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Boswell?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shoresman?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, and the motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate it. And Q also. So now we have, I think, what a lot of people in the audience have been waiting for. We have the, the review and appeal of the planning commission's decision to revoke the conditional use permit for a fraternity located at 1236 Monte Vista, Monte Vista Place. At this point, I will ask about ex parte disclosures, then we'll hear presentation from staff, have questions from staff, and then there will be 10 minutes for the appellant presentation. So for the members who are here to speak for Delta Chi, I know that you can speak all 10 minutes all at once, or you can save some of that time for questions. With that, I will move on to Vice Mayor. Have you had any ex parte visits with the group?
No, I have been attempting to set up a talk with them after the hearing, but have not communicated about the situation before the meeting.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, I spoke with several alumni, but no current members.
Thank you. Councilmember Boswell?
Yes, I spoke with the appellant.
Thank you. And councilmember Marks?
No, I have had no ex parte contact.
Okay. And I have, I met with the three alumni, sorry, two, no, three alumni, one was on Zoom, sorry, and three members of Delta Chi. There was no additional information they shared, other than expanding on what's already in the report, so nothing additional to give at this time. City attorney?
Metamare, I was just going to ask that Councilmember Boswell and any colleagues that met with them also make the same representation as to whether or not there was any additional information shared that isn't reflected in the record.
Thank you for that.
I don't believe so, no, I don't recall any.
Thank you. So with that, we'll move, nope, councilmember Francis?
I also don't believe there was additional information from outside of the report.
Thank you. Sorry, I just jumped to that because of the alumni, I apologize. All right, with that, councilmember Boswell, did you still have more to add? Okay. So we'll move on now to staff who was working on technology, and we'll come back in a minute. We may need assistance.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Mallory Patino. I'm an assistant planner, and I will be presenting to you tonight on the Appeal Revocation of a Fraternity Conditional Use Permit, application numbers APPL 0665-2025 and Use 0332-2025. Staff's recommendation is that council adopt a draft resolution denying the appeal and upholding the Planning Commission's decision to revoke the use permit for fraternity located at 1236 Monte Vista Place. The project site in question, 1236 Monte Vista Place, is zoned high-density residential, a developed property with multiple two- and three-story multifamily structures comprised of 26 bedrooms, various site improvements. It's an irregularly shaped lot. You access it off Monte Vista Place. It's surrounded by other R4 high-density properties and abuts the Cal Poly campus on the northern boundary. For some background, on August 12, 1998, the Planning Commission approved Use Permit U10698 to allow fraternity, Kappa Sigma at the time, at the multifamily apartment complex 1236 Monte Vista Place. The fraternity organization, Delta Chi, began residing at 1236 Monte Vista in 2012, continuing use of the site under that existing use permit. The police department issued a citation, one citation for a noise violation, one citation for unruly gathering last school year between the beginning and March of 2025. One of those was successfully appealed from March, it was issued on March 3. That was the noise violation. The unruly gathering citation was issued on March 15, the Saturday ahead of St. Patrick's Day, locally called St. Fridays. Notes from the police response to visit at 4:00 a.m. cite that there were approximately 100 people visible in the courtyard. Music could be heard from over 200 feet from the property line, and alcohol was present on-site. Despite efforts from code enforcement and police department to encourage safe celebrations and deter unruly gatherings ahead of St. Patrick's Day, the event still took place at 1236 Monte Vista, resulting in the unruly gathering citation. On March 9, a subsequent complaint was made to the police, though no citation was issued. On March 19, code enforcement issued a notice of violation to the property related to the multiple confirmed administrative citations, noise violations, and use permit violations. The notice of violation from code enforcement informed the property owner and tenants that the use permit would be recommended to the director, to be recommended to Planning Commission for re-review per Condition Number 11. The director then did refer the use permit to Planning Commission for review. After this referral occurred and after the fraternity was notified on April 18, 2025, the fraternity received an additional noise violation citation for a large gathering of approximately 50 visible people with alcohol present. On May 28, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing for the re-review of the use permit to consider the continuation of the fraternity at 1236 Monte Vista. Staff evaluated the fraternity and considered its recent violations, the updated findings and criteria of approval, code requirements, and previous recent council and advisory body actions for consistency across all fraternity and sorority use permits. Staff recommended to the Planning, that the Planning Commission allow continuation of the fraternity subject to a modified use permit. Planning Commission heard staff's recommendation, the applicant's testimony, and public testimony. After considering all evidence, Planning Commission was concerned and determined that the design, location, size, and operating characteristics of the site as a fraternity were not compatible with residential uses in the vicinity. Additionally, they were determined that continued use as a fraternity was not appropriate for the subject location, was incompatible with the neighborhood, and was detrimental to the safety, health, and welfare of persons living and working in or around the site. Therefore, they could not make the required findings and voted 5-0 to revoke the use permit. Subsequently, on June 20, Delta Chi Cal Poly Chapter filed a timely appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to revoke the use permit. Delta Chi asserts that the revocation was premature and that issues cited can be effectively addressed through collaboration with city staff and other stakeholders. The appellant requests that the city council uphold the appeal, reverse the Planning Commission's decision to revoke the use permit, and direct staff to work in good faith with Delta Chi to amend the existing permit, to ensure compliance and to ensure compliance and alignment with community expectations. The appeal form and supplemental statements can be distilled into two main issues. The first appeal issue is relating to good faith reliance, cooperative history, and severe and disproportionate penalty. The appellant states that they have committed to reducing incidents that led to citations or use permit violations, and working with city staff to comply with permit conditions and address neighborhood concerns. The appellant notes that they've invested time and resources in mitigation measures and adjusted management practices, and have consistently sought to be constructive members of the community. The appellant states that after years of interaction and reliance on city feedback, revocation imposed a severe and disproportionate penalty, which leaves them to face significant hardship due to a change in course. Staff's response to issue number one is as follows. Staff acted in accordance with municipal code by conducting a judicial process for the review of potential violations of conditions of approval for unauthorized use. The director referred the use permit to Planning Commission for re-review based on several citations, complaints, and use permit violations in accordance with Condition 11, as stated previously. The complaints and violations and questions before the Planning Commission hearing were as follows. March 3, a noise violation citation, which was successfully appealed. However, this appeal was completed after the director referred the use permit for re-review. March 9, a complaint for police for noisy music, no citation was issued. March 15 was the St. Fridays unruly gathering, issued at 4:00 a.m., over 100 people visible, reports of a live DJ playing music that could be heard from over 200 feet from the property line. This event was also in direct violation of multiple conditions of the use permit. March 19, code enforcement issued that notice of violation, requiring the fraternity to cease violations of the municipal code and of the use permit, and the director referred the use permit for re-review. April 18, the noise citation was for a party around 9:30 p.m., indicating approximately 50 people and alcohol present. This event also was in violation of multiple conditions of the use permit. Since the revocation, the fraternity has received another citation from police. On October 4, police issued a noise violation citation for reported noisy music around 2:30 a.m. The responding officer noted that people were running into the apartments from the courtyard upon police's arrival, and that approximately 10 people were visible in the courtyard with alcohol present. These actions by the organization, individually and collectively, constitute a public nuisance and cause a substantial disturbance of the quiet enjoyment of private property in the immediate neighborhood. Therefore, the Planning Commission's decision to revoke the use permit would not be considered severe or disproportionate penalty. Additionally, revocation is not a significant change in course for the fraternity, because the property may be continued to be used as its primary use, residential. Fraternity members may continue to live at 1236 Monte Vista Place. The change would require regular fraternity operations, such as chapter meetings and special events, to cease on-site. Those meetings and gatherings may continue at off-site locations, including Cal Poly's campus or private venues that are suitable for intended land use. The second appeal issue relates to collaborative, the collaborative process for constructive resolution. The appellant requests that city council uphold the appeal and direct staff to collaborate with Delta Chi, neighbors, and university partners to modify the conditions of the use permit so that they are clear, achievable, and enforceable. The appellant provided feedback and proposed modifications in addition to the draft conditions of approval that were presented on May 28 to the Planning Commission in that draft resolution. The appellant argues that their drafted modifications address concerns raised by the Planning Commission, and if adopted, would allow the fraternity operations to satisfy the required findings. Staff's response to issue number two is as follows. There is insufficient evidence to address Planning Commission's concerns and prove that the operation of a fraternity is appropriate for the subject location, compatible with the neighborhood, and that it will not be a detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of people living or working around the site. Staff evaluated the proposed modifications and additions to the draft conditions of approval. Staff notes that while many changes may be beneficial, the proposed conditions are quite conceptual and lack information relating to implementation, or how that implementation would effectively change the operations and behavior of the fraternity. Included in the council agenda report is Attachment E, which outlines all the proposed modifications and additions to that May 28 draft conditions of approval list, and staff's response to those. Some key proposed modifications are listed here on the slide. They include increasing the maximum gathering limit, submitting an annual event plan, adding an annual CUP education program, and implementing a good neighbor management plan, and conducting local community service events annually. Again, while staff recognizes that some of these proposed changes would be beneficial to the community, the proposed conditions are conceptual and lack details for implementation. The appeal process also does not provide an effective avenue to support a collaborative conversation or the time necessary to modify the existing use permit. The appellant may reapply for a new use permit, at which time staff would collaborate with the applicant and other stakeholders on their application proposal. If city council directs staff to undertake the effort requested by the appellant, the appeal would need to be continued either to a date certain in the future or off calendar to provide time for staff, the appellant, and community to discuss the proposed conditions, and then return for consideration of a revised use permit and proposed findings. For city council's consideration today, this is a de novo review. De novo review means that the city council must exercise independent judgment to determine if the applicant appellate's use permit should be modified, revoked, or remain in effect as it was prior to the Planning Commission's revocation. City council is not bound by the Planning Commission's findings or conclusions. City council would be required to make their decision based on the required findings that are outlined in the staff report and included on the slide here for you. City council can consider staff's recommendation, and staff has also provided other alternatives outlined on this slide. City council can, one, continue review of the appeal, including providing direction to staff regarding additional information or analysis required to make a decision. This action would result in the use permit continuing, and the fraternity would be allowed to continue operations under the 1998 use permit until another action is taken. Two, uphold the appeal and modify the use permit, including modifying findings and/or conditions of approval based on consistency with the general plan, zoning regs, and other policy documents. The city council may consider and incorporate any of the appellant's submitted modified or new conditions. This would allow continuation of fraternity operations under finalized conditions of approval. Staff recommends that if council pursues this action, the hearing on the appeal be continued to a date certain to allow for preparation and consideration of a revised resolution. Three, uphold the appeal and retain the existing use permit as is with the existing findings and conditions of approval. Again, staff recommends that if council pursues this action, the hearing on the appeal be continued to a date certain to allow for preparation and consideration of a revised resolution. To conclude, staff's recommendation is that council adopt a draft resolution denying the appeal and upholding the Planning Commission's decision to revoke the use permit for fraternity located at 1236 Monte Vista Place. Thank you for your time. Staff is available for questions, including planning, code enforcement, and police.
Thank you so much. That's a lot of information to go through. And as I ran into Planner Patino in the hallway, and I said, yep, I just re-listened to the entire Planning Commission, heard your voice for a couple of hours. So, lots of things to concisely share today. So, thank you so much. Council member Marks?
Yeah, I just have one initial question, which is that you had mentioned that the, if we do deny the appeal, that the fraternity can reapply for a CUP? Now, is there like a period of time before they would be eligible to do that? Or could they just run out like the next day and say, okay, we want to apply for a new conditional use permit?
To my knowledge, there's no time limit. They could turn around and apply tomorrow.
They could do it just, they could just turn around and just do it the very next day. Okay, thank you.
Council member Boswell?
Thank you. I have a few questions. I'm going to refer to the conditions that were before the Planning Commission, for the proposed CUP, mainly just so I can better understand a little bit how we think about application of our codes.
Would you like them on the slides?
If you have them, that's fine.
Yeah.
I can refer to them. I was reviewing these just so I'd sort of better understand what potential conditions look like. So, many of these are, many of these seem fairly administrative, or they're referring to existing city codes. But I noted a few that appear to go beyond what we would normally require for any other residential use in an R3 or R4 district. So, number three, yeah, number three is the max 35 residents on the property. If this was not a CUP, I think there's 26 bedrooms, it might be reasonable to assume that there could be, what, there's two per room, 52 people or more? Is there any, what provision would the city use to otherwise if there was not a CUP in place to determine maximum occupancy?
I think John from Code Enforcement may be the best to answer that.
Yeah, John has a Code Enforcement supervisor. There are provisions in the International Property Maintenance Code that talk about the square footage that's required for a certain number of people to live within. I don't remember off the top of my head. But you, I think for bedrooms, you have to have a certain square footage for one person to sleep in there, and then it increases from there. So, there are provisions that would limit it. I would have to look them up from the top to tell you those specifically, though.
But it would certainly be more than what is permitted under the proposed CUP to the Planning Commission?
I don't remember how many units are in there. How many? Do you know?
Teen, but I'll check.
It's going to be based on the bedroom sizes, too. So, not necessarily the square footage of the entire unit, but the size of the bedrooms that are in there. So, there's a number of factors that you'd have to consider when looking at, you know, maximum occupancy, life-safety-wise.
Condition number four is a condition on the maximum number of people that could be on the site for a routine meeting or gathering. That was proposed to be 54. Yep. And what would be the maximum otherwise?
Special events are not allowed in the residential zones otherwise unless per a use permit that's been applied for. This use permit allows them to gather for up to 54 people. Beyond that would require additional permitting procedures with the Community Development Department. But otherwise, the residential zone doesn't allow for these use permits to apply unless it's a specific use, otherwise.
Sorry, is that what you're asking, though? Or you're asking for if people wanted to have a gathering in a R4 zone?
Both are good answers.
Okay.
But also, I'd like to hear if it's just a gathering, not a special event, I suppose.
So, this is a more restrictive regulation. You know, people have gatherings at their homes, or gatherings at apartment complexes, or people could have gatherings in each of the apartments or units. And so, the intent is that this is more limiting. And beyond that, I don't think we normally regulate, you know, unless it's a, having impacts on the neighbors because it's noisy, or there are other impacts affecting other people. That's the intent of this regulation.
Thank you. There was also number nine, which is just about bicycle spaces, and I know that exceeds the city's general requirement. Number 10, if I understand this correctly, it's just extending the morning hours. So, instead of 10 to 7, which would be normal, this is extending 10 to 9 a.m. So, two hours in the morning. this is extending 10 to 9 a.m., so two hours in the morning. Okay. And then just, let's see. And again, maybe you sort of answered this, I guess, a little bit. Number 11, which is a special event. If a, again, if this was just a typical apartment building, and some folks wanted to have an event, would they, is there a pathway for that? Or only a CUP enables a special event permit?
In the residential zone, only a previously approved permit that offers this pathway would allow them to pursue a special event permit.
Great. Okay, thank you. And then I just have one question, maybe for the city manager. Can you remind us how much the city spent to manage St. Friday's Day this year? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Thank you. And luckily, I know I do have some help from our police department as well. But I know it kind of depends on how you look at it. We were lucky to get a lot of assistance from other agencies who did not actually charge us for that assistance. So I believe it was in the range of, you know, between $100,000 to $300,000. I'm seeing nodding. Yeah, I believe. But it's hard to, if you were to take actual in-kind costs, you know, it would be significantly greater than that.
Great, thank you. That's all my questions for now.
Do we have anyone from the Slow PD who would like to add additional information?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Brian Amoroso, Deputy Chief for the Police Department. City Manager McDonald is correct. I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but our initial costs were over $100,000 in overtime and associated fees for rental equipment and et cetera. You know, we had in excess of 300 law enforcement officers. Most of those came as other agency assist, which means the city was not charged for their time. If we were charged for their time, it would have been somewhere between $1,500,000 and $800,000 probably for total staff time for that event. But I believe our cost to the city, somewhere $150,000 to $250,000, without having the figures in front of me, actual costs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, so sorry, thank you. I have Councilmember Francis, then we'll have Vice Mayor, then Councilmember Marks, and then I have a few questions as well. Councilmember Francis?
Yeah, thank you. Very thorough presentation, I really appreciate it. I just have a few, maybe very basic questions. I was wondering if we could articulate what the benefits to the fraternity are for having a CUP in place? And I know you just mentioned that the ability to host special events, but what are the other benefits to them for having it in place?
Currently, fraternity operations are only allowed with a CUP. So if they were to operate as a fraternity without a CUP, they would be in violation of land, like they would have a land use violation. So, you know, in one way or the other, if they're violating the CUP, if they don't have the CUP, then they're in violation of land use regulations currently. Definitely the special events, to be able to host them in the residential zone is not something that is otherwise allowed.
How would we determine that they were operating as a fraternity versus a bunch of residents living together who happen to be affiliated with the fraternity?
That's a good question for John Mesipesa from Code Enforcement.
Well, that's certainly difficult to determine. I think when we look at it from an enforcement perspective, say we get a complaint that there is a location that's operating as a fraternity, we generally will look whether or not there's some sanctioned event that took place at the location. And then we would attempt to visit the site and just ask, "Hey, do you have any fraternity members living here?" That doesn't always get the right answer. But we would say that if we have, you know, a preponderance of the evidence, that, you know, it's more likely than not that it's operating as a fraternity, we would move forward with enforcement. But we don't have the ability to come in and verify whether or not fraternity members live on-site.
Thank you. Out on that is signage on the house. While there are some regulations on signage in the residential zones, having signage relating to the operations of a fraternity, i.e. fraternity letters on the house, is definitely something to consider that, I believe, is extended through their CUP, is allowed, and shows some sort of operations.
And then circling back to the earlier comment about special events, and it seemed like there was a little discussion about gatherings versus special events. How do we officially define what a special event is versus impromptu gathering?
We do have a section in the municipal code relating to special events that I'm going to pull up and try to summarize briefly for you.
We can also come back to it in a moment if it's tricky to find.
And I can buy Mallory some time. I think if you look at number four, the condition that was proposed by staff to the planning commission, that's where it talks about the 54.45 people, which we rounded to 54. And it says, "Except as otherwise approved by the Community Development Director." So in this specific case, the special event would be if they wanted to exceed that number of people. So that's what was written into the proposed conditions for this particular case.
Right. So anything that exceeds what's defined in the CUP is considered a special event if you have a CUP in place?
And if the condition says you can ask for a special event permit for that specific thing. So that's why we specifically said if you want to exceed that number of people, that's your path forward. And then it defines that they would need a transportation management plan, and talks about the Community Development Director's discretion in approving that special event permit.
Something that I've learned a lot about over the last few weeks is how many different kind of variations on CUPs we seem to have in the city. And I was wondering if we have sort of a ballpark idea of, well, number one, how many CUPs are sort of out there? And then how much time we're spending, staff time we're spending, managing these variances in CUPs, and then their appearances in front of planning commission, and obviously this now, which is fairly unusual. But we have some more teed up, I understand. I'm just curious, what's the staff investment on the CUP front?
I see Tyler is typing to me in Teams, so I'm going to see if his encyclopedic knowledge knows how many CUPs we might have. But you're correct, there are a number of various types of land uses that require CUPs. So generally, CUPs are required when there is a possibility that a land use may need to be controlled a little bit through some specific conditions related to that. So sometimes you see them for car washes, for example, because they can be noisy, or fraternities and sororities.
I'm so sorry, I should have been more specific. I meant CUPs specifically relating to fraternities and sororities. I'm sorry about that.
That would be a very hard question.
No, I don't need all of them, but.
We do have numbers on that.
Yes, we do. The amount of time, I'll start there, because they're getting me the answer, 14. And I think a majority of them at this point are for sororities, and fewer for fraternities at this point. The amount of time has increased in recent years because of the concerns from the neighbors that we're hearing that are leading to this revocation, you know, the possible revocation at the planning commission. We have spent an extensive amount of time in the last year and a half on this issue. Each CUP that goes forward to the planning commission for re-review or revocation takes probably time from five or six staff members in the city attorney's office, many, many, many hours to prepare. And then, in this case, it was appealed, and so there was additional time with this as well. But, and then in addition, we also have the ongoing code enforcement time that is taken to ensure that the conditional use permits are being followed. And so we work with the police department to make note of when there are noise violations. And then the code enforcement office has to do a lot of work to verify whether those are actual violations of the conditional use permits.
So that would be above and beyond the code enforcement time that would be spent just in normal enforcement of a noise or unruly gathering scenario?
Yes. Because in a normal scenario, we have no land use violation necessarily related to a noise citation. So if I get a noise citation at my home on a Saturday night, it's not necessarily a land use violation that Community Development knows about. But when it's attached to a conditionally permitted fraternity or sorority, it then involves more work from staff to verify that, look at which conditions it may be violating, and then start a code enforcement process that wouldn't normally take place for other noise violations.
But without the CUP in place, the city still has the ability to regulate disruptive behaviors, such as unruly gatherings, any sort of noise violations, really during any part of the day, but especially during the evening, more quiet hours, right?
Yes.
Okay. I apologize, I know these are really simple questions, but I just think it's kind of important to get at, you know, what exactly is the CUP doing here? So I think that's it for now. Thank you.
For some reason, I thought we only had three fraternity CUPs left.
I think there's about three or four fraternity CUPs left.
14 is active sorority and fraternity combined.
Right. Very different, though, in this situation. So I just want to make sure what we're talking about. Okay, so Vice Mayor, you're up next.
Thanks. Yeah, hopefully mine will be quick here. I don't have the citation or the page number, so I just want to check my recollection of this. I feel like the Community Development Director can trigger a re-review of a conditional use permit in a fraternity or sorority situation only after there is a complaint. I think, doesn't it say it can be a complaint, a citation, or I can't remember what the other conditions are that could trigger the re-review? But it doesn't need to be that they have received a citation or a certain number of citations. It just, it can even be just a certain number of complaints, I think. Is that correct?
So Mallory's pulling up some information. One thing to note here is that we have CUPs from decades ago and some CUPs from last year. And so as we're doing re-reviews and learning more about best practice, we are amending the language. And so we've landed on, the most recent CUP that was approved had the kind of three, there you go. So the use permit shall be reviewed if any reasonable written citizen or police or fire department complains are received by the city. So that's for this use permit. Some of the other use permits that have come through more recently have different language, and it talks about three complaints or citations. And so this one does not have that same language. But we're trying to get them to all be in line as they come through.
Okay.
Not every CUP has this language. We have some active CUPs that do not have any language triggering re-review right now.
And this is an older CUP, if I remember correctly, right? Like 2012 or something like that?
1998.
Oh, even the older, okay. So back in 1998, we, somebody felt like this was okay language. And as we're reviewing or getting new CUPs, we've added some language that actually sounds like it might be a little bit, a little bit more lenient.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, that's an interesting clarifying point. The other thing that I wanted to ask about was, I went a little bit down a rabbit hole, I think, on one of the links in the staff report, and found some language in Section 17.86.140 that talks about, there's a statement that says that there needs to be, it describes where a fraternity or sorority can be. And it talks about R4. And one of the other clauses that was in there that caught my eye is that there are student-oriented, that it has to have student-oriented uses adjacent to the property. So I wonder if you could go back to the map and that was in the slide deck and that showed where the property was. And I know you showed on the northern side of the property is Cal Poly. But I'm wondering what the other uses are around it. I mean, I know there are four, so they're probably relatively dense. But are they student-oriented uses? Or are they just other private apartment buildings? Do you know what's kind of around that property in this area?
I know there are a couple other fraternity or sorority locations in this vicinity. My understanding is, I think this corner used to be one here, just down the street from it. I know there's one kind of right down this way. We looked at one that was also revoked, that's just right outside of this screen. But mostly, I would say that they are residential uses. I think it's fair to say mostly for student housing, but obviously open to anybody.
Okay, so the ones like directly adjacent to it are all just larger apartment buildings with, that could be a mix, maybe student-oriented, but could be a mix?
Is this, can someone tell me, John, is this where Alpha Gamma Row is? At the end? I actually do think that this is AGR. I think it's also the one that abuts Cal Poly, so another active fraternity.
Okay. Thank you, I think that's all my questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Marks?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so it's my understanding from the staff report that this facility used to be just kind of a regular multifamily apartment. Is that correct? Before the first CUP was issued?
Prior to 1998, to our knowledge.
1998, okay. And so my question is whether multifamily apartment complexes outside of the ones that are occupied by fraternities routinely get noise violations, unruly gathering-type violations? Or is there something, is this more characteristic of multifamily facilities that are occupied by fraternities?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Jason Dickel with the Police Department? Yes, of course. The unruly gathering and our noise, excuse me, our noise ordinance applies everywhere. And so certainly, I don't have numbers specifically towards other apartments in that area. But if there's a noise happening and officers respond, absolutely, there's a citation that could be issued. Some things change with a fraternity. It gives us an opportunity to, already have had previous education, that would know more about the ordinance. And then it also limits some of our response, like our SNAP program wouldn't respond, just officers would respond.
Okay, so as long as you're up there, when noise violations are issued, does that have any kind of effect in terms of future conduct in a fraternity? Or do they just, do fraternities just keep having noise violations? In other words, is there a preventative kind of causation?
I would say, in my personal opinion, yes, there could be other recourse through the school and through the fraternity council. So it does offer that up as there's other options besides just the punitive action that might happen to them. If it was a private party at a private residence, where there would be a fine associated with it, and they could pay it. Responding to a fraternity like this one, there could be recourse through the school and other measures.
In your experience, has there been a time that a noise violation has been issued after a fraternity has had a conditional use permit referred to the planning commission?
Specifically, I don't know, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. I think this may be for Director Twain, but I'm not sure. Kind of going back to Councilmember Boswell's questions around how many people can live in so many square feet, whether it's a 60 feet to 90 feet, seemed like there was, or square feet, seemed like there were some multiple answers in the report. There have been some newer California housing laws since 1998. So I'm just curious, how many people are able to be in a house of this size or of a multifamily unit of this size? Because we've received complaints, not even about Greek life at all, just about too many people in a house, but yet there are not really actually too many people in a house based on the newer housing rules. So I'm just curious, how would that apply here?
Sure. And I invite John to come up and correct me if I get this wrong, but I believe the regulations- but I believe the regulation is 50 square feet in a bedroom per person. So if you have a 100-square-foot bedroom, you're allowed to have two people there. And so, again, to, yeah, okay. So to John's point, the size of the bedrooms matter and the number of bedrooms. So when we get a complaint, that's, we refer to the California, the health and safety standards. But beyond that, we don't have any local regulations because we are limited in our ability to regulate things like that.
Thank you. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I'm reading this correctly. And then there was a comment earlier around De novo and what we can and can't do today. And I think there might be a little bit of gray area with that that actually holds our hands a little bit. So modifying, in the realm of property rights, can we really just go ahead and modify the CUP today? Or do we have to look at, are we truly upholding this revocation and allowing people to modify where we're at right now? And say, we'd like to make some changes to the CUPs at CUP, and then maybe allow them to keep it or not. But it doesn't seem like we're able to make just full-on just modifications of whatever we'd like today. Because my understanding is we depended on what the property rights are and what the CUP is.
So I believe you have the discretion to modify it tonight, if that's what you'd like to do. That was what was before the Planning Commission. And because you're not bound by what they did, you, you could revoke it. You could continue it as is, or you could modify it as you see fit, if that would allow you to make the findings to allow them to continue to operate.
Okay, thank you. City Manager.
Thank you. Just to clarify there, the use permit at issue here addresses this question specifically and provides that in review of the use permit, the Planning Commission may add, delete, or modify conditions of approval or revoke the use permit. And then on appeal, you would have the same ability.
Okay, but that's my question right there. So my understanding was that if they were allowing, let me see if I say this right, not revoking the CUP, you could make modifications. But if you're revoking, you can't make modifications?
If you revoke the permit, there's no permit. And then we would need to be in a new permit kind of status. But if you would like to allow the permit to continue, you can do that and modify the conditions of approval.
So if I wanted to uphold the revocation with a tabling of dates certain before having to actually go through the re-application process? Because I'd like to see what we can clean up and standardize in our CUPs going forward. How would that be done?
I think so, certainly I would, we need to address the, this specific use permit and try to make sure that if the permit is going to continue, that it reflects the needs that you've identified for the ongoing use to still meet the findings that are required for the use to continue, which is essentially the findings of, of the use permit to begin with. So if you would like to uphold the revocation from the Planning Commission and yet allow for the use. So once the revocation happens, the use is no longer consistent with the code, essentially. But if you would like to enable the applicants, essentially, to go through the process of coming, coming up with a new use permit, so applying for a new use permit, certainly the cleanest way would be for them to apply for a new use permit. We have kind of thought through some creative options that might allow for the revocation to be in place with a condition that if modifications are made, they could be made and considered through whatever kind of process. I would certainly look for as much direction as possible to make sure we address the needs. And then with a review, I think. The issue is, we definitely would need some kind of public hearing so that the public and the applicant have an opportunity to review that. We could talk about either a re-review with the Planning Commission, return to the City Council. There's a few different options there. So that's one thing that we've thought through. It stretches the brain, at least my brain, for sure, and practice. But it is something that we've tried to think through. I would say just broadly, with conditional use permits, the intent of them is to regulate an activity that is of a type that we know we need special conditions for it to be allowed. And you would do this for resource-intensive type uses, things where you have a higher degree of neighborhood compatibility issues. So you know you need to have extra public review and on top of recognizing that it does become a vested property right once it is approved. And so all of that together means that they are by nature unique, typically. There's usually conditions that get imposed in order to address the specific issues with the site itself. It could be maybe, like, let's say there's a school across the street, or there's a sensitive use of some kind, or a sensitive resource on the site that we need to mitigate for. So we certainly, and I know our department tries to have standard conditions. It's better for everybody. We make sure we don't miss anything. People have a better sense of what's likely to be expected of them when they come in for a permit. And then there's always issues that come up specific to that site to make sure that we are addressing the needs for the use itself. I think, though, that you, you're also seeing very much an evolution of the uses and the needs over time. The fact that you have some conditions that state, you know, if you have reasonable complaints that then generate the need for a review by the Planning Commission. That could be a citation, that could be one, that could be three, that could be over a certain period of time. And so those types of needs, I think, that's more of kind of a, we're trying to evolve and address the needs that we see coming up more frequently. So I know that's not really the question you asked, but going back to the original, how would we do this? I think if we wanted to revoke it, but give direction on if there is a modification that the applicant would like to work through, we could probably address that through kind of a unique process that would definitely have it coming back before either the Planning Commission or the City Council, or both.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. I know that was a confusing question, but I appreciate it. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, that kind of lost me a little bit. So I'm going to try and see if I can understand with another question. So the appellant, and I know we'll still hear from them, but they have been interested in and proposed some modifications to their existing conditional use permit. Because I'm guessing, and like I said, we'll hear from them directly, but they would like to keep their conditional use permit in place while they work through some proposed changes with staff. But in order for that to happen, we would have to uphold their appeal and keep the existing CUP in place until they worked through the changes with staff. We couldn't revoke the existing CUP without them just reapplying and working through conditions with staff with a revoked permit, right? Like, they would go back to their regular status as a large property in an R4 and have to follow all the rules like a large property in an R4 while they applied for another conditional use permit and possibly negotiated the terms or helped create the terms with staff. Am I understanding that right? There's no way to revoke and change at the same time?
I mean, you can write whatever conditions you want. Like, you can delete every single existing conditions and write whatever conditions you want, if that condition is operations.
Right, but that's not a revocation.
Revocation versus the.
That's not a revocation, right? That's a, yeah, sorry.
I think the City Attorney has some input.
So we, we've talked through a little bit at the staff level, some potential alternatives. And I think one is essentially to deny the appeal, thereby revoking the use permit, but do that conditionally. So in effect, you would order the use to cease and perhaps provide for a period of time during that cessation of use for them to return with an application for modification. And the revocation would, and that would go presumably back through the Planning Commission, probably with, as a recommendation to the council. If the council wants to see those conditions directly, I think that's the most, the most efficient way to do it. And I would recommend that you set, that you provide a set amount of time in which the applicant is allowed to submit that modification application and provide that the revocation becomes permanent, either in the event that they do not submit that modification and/or if the council does not ultimately approve a modification that is submitted.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Okay, so that would still be a revocation, though, right? And then that would be just putting a time certain to give them, to give them an amount of time to modify if they chose to. Would they still have to do a new application process? Or would they just be working off of their old CUP and modify from that?
I'll defer to your Community Development Director, Tway, but I think the discussion we had would be to process that as, through the modification process, if that were the direction of the council and subject to the modification fee.
Correct.
Thank you both. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Boswell.
Okay, so, so that, that option's not one of our alternatives. And really, the value there is that probably is that we're not charging the fraternity an additional permit fee. I mean, because they can always, if we deny it, they can always come back whenever they want. They could wait a year, or two years, three years. So here, we would give them a window. Say, if you come back with a proposal within this time period, we won't consider it a new application. Okay, thanks.
Just one of the options. Okay, with where we're at now, I don't think there's any more questions from my colleagues. So now it is, it is time for the appellant to share your thoughts. You can take, like I said, all 10 minutes now, or you can share some minutes and then leave some minutes for some Q and A from us or others.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Chris Green, and I'm here as a San Luis Obispo resident and the incoming president of Cal Poly Delta, of the Cal Poly Delta Chi fraternity. First, I want to sincerely thank Director Tway and the entire planning and city staff for their professionalism, patience, and willingness to engage with us throughout this process. Their effort to find a constructive path forward has been incredible, and we deeply appreciate it. I respectfully ask that the council support the collaborative approach proposed in the staff report to continue this appeal and give all parties a time and framework to create a better, more enforceable permit together. We recognize that neighbors and city staff have raised real concerns about neighborhood compatibility, safety, and accountability, and we take those concerns seriously. However, many of these issues commonly associated with Greek life, or Greek housing in R1 and R2 zones do not apply to us. Our property is located in an R4 zone, and Delta Chi only hosts events within that designated area. We are directly boundary to two fraternities and three, three sororities also reside in the, in the picture previously shown earlier. Additionally, Delta Chi has worked in good faith to address every issue cited by the Planning Commission, including noise, crowd management, communication, and compliance. Our fraternity has proposed clear, responsible solutions, including stronger noise and event protocols, defined occupancy management standards, an annual education and compliance program for members, a good neighbor management plan for outreach to nearby residents, and a community service program that gives back directly to San Luis Obispo, including the Adopt a Park program at Santa Rosa Skate Park, monthly beach cleanups with Central Coast Aquarium, and programs at Sinseheimer Elementary. The staff report provides an alternative, collaborative path forward. Staff noted that if the council directs, the appeal could be continued to a future date or off calendar, giving staff, the organization, and the community the chance to refine the proposal and return with a revised framework. We understand there is never a guarantee that there won't be issues as we move forward. But with a conditional use permit in place, clear expectations, and ongoing collaboration, the likelihood of problems will be far less than without one. The CUP provides structure, accountability, and a mechanism for continuous improvement, the exact tools that make responsible progress possible. City staff has already indicated they plan to develop a revised citywide Greek framework over the next six to nine months. Continuing our appeal through that process will allow Delta Chi to help set the standard for a stronger, more enforceable, and community-oriented system. We're not asking to avoid oversight. We're asking to make it work together. Thank you for your time. I'd now like to turn it over to our Treasurer, Jack Worley, who will discuss the financial and operational impacts of revoking the CUP.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jack Worley, and I serve as the Treasurer for the Delta Chi, or the Cal Poly chapter of Delta Chi. If our conditional use permit is revoked, we are required to reapply from scratch at a minimum cost of $11,000 in city fees alone. Every dollar would come directly from our undergraduate members, many of whom work directly for, directly on campus and with other part-time jobs to cover both their rent and their tuition. Revoking our CUP now, before a new model is even in place, would remove one of the few organizations working with city staff to build a stronger, more effective system. Delta Chi chose to appeal because we want to remain in the city's framework and support positive change. We've already committed $8,000 to the appeal process and additional $4,000 to strengthen security measures and internal policies. Supporting our appeal not only aligns with the staff's alternative recommendation, it also protects the city's interests, relieves our members of an unnecessary financial burden, and keeps this public process moving forward in a constructive way. Thank you. I will now turn it over to our new Risk Management Chair, Garrett Hager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Garrett Hager, and I'm the incoming Risk Management Chair for the Delta Chi fraternity. Thank you for allowing me the chance to speak to you this evening. Before I start, I want to share that I am one of the members of our fraternity who works multiple part-time jobs to help pay for my education and housing. I truly don't know how I would cover my portion of the $11,000 if we were required to start over. As a person responsible for safety and compliance, I want to address this recent citation issued two weeks ago. This is not a fraternity event. It involved a few individuals acting independently without chapter authorization. They've been disciplined internally, and we immediately informed our alumni advisors and reviewed our procedures. We take full responsibility for managing our property. That said, this incident highlights a broader issue, one the staff report itself identifies. The current CUP structure does not provide an effective avenue to support collaborative conversation. Right now, there's no built-in mechanism for early warning, open dialogue, or corrective action between the city and a Greek organization. There also is no clear way to distinguish between a Greek-related event and a standard neighborhood noise complaint. Even when issues are isolated and resolved quickly, the system tends to default to escalation rather than partnership. That's why we respectfully ask the council to continue this appeal either to a date certain or off calendar to allow for a city staff or chapter in the community to work together on a revised use permit and propose findings. We're committed to operating responsibly, and we believe that it can only happen within a structure that encourages collaboration and continuous improvement, not isolation. Continuing the appeal as recommended by the staff gives everyone, the city, our chapter, and the neighborhood an opportunity to create a stronger, more enforceable, and more cooperative framework moving forward. Thank you for your time and consideration. We would now like to reserve the remainder of our time to speak after public comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there, do we do questions of the appellant before a public comment? Okay. Do we have any questions from my colleagues to the appellant at this time? Councilmember Boswell.
Yeah, I have a few questions. Thank you for your presentations. Much appreciated. First of all, this may sound like an obvious question, but I'm going to ask it anyways, which is, why do you want a CUP? And what benefit do you see in having it?
So that's a, a conversation we've, you know, had many times with our alumni and our active chapter. You know, I think the main point of why we want a CUP is because we want to operate within the flesh with the city. And rather than, than not having a CUP and kind of not being able to be held accountable and have a partnership with the city. Because there also are, you know, we've learned some cons of having a CUP right now, especially with, with our. especially with, with our CUP in particular. We have 36 people who live there. Only 54 people are allowed on, on property at a time. That means if 10 of our sets of parents are moving us in on move-in week, we're violating our CUP. Or if 20 of our girlfriends are over at the same time, we're violating our CUP. And so, obviously, our CUP is pretty outdated from 1998 and, and we just want to work together with, with the city and with the school to, to have a workable, modernized CUP that's more up-to-date.
Thanks. Who currently owns the property?
Link Real Estate Group.
Was there, did Delta Chi have a housing corporation at one point or no?
Yes.
Yeah. But they're not currently owning or managing the property?
No.
When did that relationship end?
That ended over summer when our CUP was revoked, or before, as we appealed.
And I'm just a little curious, does, does the Delta Chi Cal Poly chapter, are you your own 501(c)(3) or 501(c)(7) perhaps, or do you know?
No, we are a part of the National Fraternity.
Right. So you're just saying, you're just organized under your National Fraternity, which I assume is a 501(c)(3)?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I got to ask the obvious question. St. Patrick's Day was no-fly zone, right? Like, no parties at all. Everyone knew it. And one of the, one of the things that was challenging for me when I listened to the Planning Commission was Delta Chi chose to appeal the St. Patrick's Day party to Cal Poly but not to the city. Can you explain, one, why even have a party at that time, but, two, why not have a conversation with the city?
Yeah, so I can speak on that. So I, from our previous executive board, we, I was not, you know, the one in charge, but I know that after having many discussions with them, the decision was to, we had, we successfully appealed a ticket on March 3rd. We were in the process of appealing that. We had, had already successfully appealed it. So we were appealing that ticket while also putting our focus on, we did not necessarily appeal with the school. We, they did their investigation, and their investigation included that we did not host an event. We, you know, had, had proof of that with videos and whatnot of, of members who were going to go to the concert, who ended up jumping our property or breaking our fences down. That's why we mentioned our, the improvements that we've made with more security cameras, different fences, and whatnot. So that's all I can speak on in that.
Okay. Councilmember Marx.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious if, when you, your fraternity is getting repeated noise violations and then the unruly gathering. I'm just curious why there hasn't been some sort of internal discipline to stop that behavior before it came to the point that we're at now?
Yeah, so, I mean, we, we got two citations last year, one being the St. Patrick's Day day on that morning. In terms of in-house discipline, there was very many people who were there who were not a part of our house. That was the people who were uninvitedly got themselves into our property. So it was kind of hard to, to punish those people who we don't even really know. And then in terms of the other citation, it was listed for having 50 people at 9:30 at night. And we are allowed 54 people. And I know that that was a mistake and we were too loud that night, but we didn't do any in-house discipline on, on that.
So are you aware that if you have people trespassing on your property, that you can call the police and ask for their help?
Yeah, so that is something that, again, I was, I, I lived at 1, 2, 3, 6 Montevista Place the last three years. I was not the one, you know, in charge of making that decision. That is something that they did consider doing. And that is something that, that they, looking back, wished that they called the police. I think that there was just a lot of panic between all of us and figuring out how to stop people from coming in. The, we actually locked our gates that day after two people got in. And the police, when they arrived, told us that we needed to unlock all the gates due to fire and, and other stuff. And more people actually made their way in, but the police told us to unlock the gates that we chain-linked closed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thanks. Yeah, so sort of along the line of the mayor's question about the St. Frat's Day party, and I appreciate Councilmember Marx's question. I was going to ask that one, too. Like, you can call the police. You are residents of the city and if you need help, you can call the police. But I wanted to ask again, with, with all of this going on and with your CUP in question, I believe there was another noise violation just a few weeks ago. And I don't know if it was, I don't remember if it was resulted in a citation or not, but, and, and now you, you mentioned that you have a, a risk manager that is a new position with your group. So I'm wondering what practices you've put in place to avoid future citations since you've already had one this year? And what caused, you know, can you explain what, what, what the, what the mechanisms were in place at the time on the 5th, I believe it was, that got you in that position?
Yeah, so the event on, on, two weeks ago was not a fraternity event whatsoever. It was strictly a couple of our members in their own private residence in one of their apartments who were playing music. And SNAP reported it to SOPD. From my understanding of the whole situation and whatnot, it was not a resident, resident who called. It was SNAP who reported it. And the police arrived. And I also want to note that that ticket is currently under appeal.
And so the second part of my question, sorry, I might have got lost, is what is your, do you have a plan in place now to prevent these types of things from happening in the future?
Yeah, so we have, we have strict in-house rules that were broken that day on your own personal music past the hour of 10:00 PM. We have our own in-house rules on the amount of people you're allowed to, to have over, especially in the last couple of months since we've tried to make changes from the past. And so we are working through that and working through new ideas. The risk manager is not necessarily a new position. It's a position we've always had. We just have a new risk manager who, all of us are new, who took over in June.
Thank you for that clarification. I think that's all my questions at this time.
Okay, thank you so much. Oh, and the last question, I believe Garrett alluded to it around the cost. In our meeting, or we met with the alumni as well, you shared it would take like 10 years to pay for the reapplication fee. Can you share more about why that fee is so prohibitive?
Yeah, so, you know, we, we spent, like Jack stated, we spent $8,000 of our house money that comes from all of us into this appeal process. That includes the appeal fee and consulting, as well as, Jack also stated, $4,000 into the house. And so that's $12,000 that came out of our pockets. We don't receive help from nationals in this matter. This is strictly money that comes out of our pockets each year, which is why having to fork up another, at the minimum, $11,000 just to apply is something that unfortunately would be a major hill for us to climb at the moment, so.
Remind me, how many people do you have in your fraternity?
Right now, we currently have 90. And by the spring, we will probably have close to 130.
Okay, thank you so much.
Close, maybe 140.
Thank you. All right, it looks like that's all the questions we have right now. Now we move back to council deliberation or any questions left for staff. Any other?
We have additional public comment?
Oh, sorry, public comment. I forgot we have more people. And then we'll go to questions for staff and then deliberation.
We have two more people, Chris Nielsen and then Jesse Grotheus.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jesse Grotheus. I've called San Luis Obispo home since 2008 and graduating from Cal Poly in 2014. I've served on city and chamber advisory bodies, coached youth soccer, and ran a small business here for eight years. I fell in love with this place the first time I toured campus as a teenager, and I still feel that same pride every time I welcome new students and family to this beautiful town. I am also a Delta Chi alumnus, and I do understand why we're here tonight. I'll be the first to say, living alongside student housing isn't always easy. There's noise, turnover, accountability, and those frustrations are real and they do matter. But I've also seen another side of the story. Over the past year, this chapter has taken real steps forward. They've listened to neighbors, worked with city staff, engaged alumni like myself and my good friend and fellow alumnus, Chris Nielsen, who came down from Sacramento to be here tonight to speak with the city and, and focus on collaborative solutions. They've invested thousands in safety and responsibility. And after meeting their student leaders, I can say that these young men are not trying to avoid accountability. They're certainly trying to earn it. As a neighbor, I believe in holding people accountable, but I also believe in growth. Slow is a university town. Our identity and our future depend on teaching young people how to engage constructively, not just punishing them when they make mistakes. A conditional use, this is a town that prides itself on unity. Unity. When challenges come up, we show up. We talk to each other. We look for solutions together. And that's part of what makes Slow so special. We don't turn away from problems. We work through them together as a community. And a conditional use permit provides exactly that structure. It gives the city oversight, gives neighbors a voice, and gives students a framework to improve under clear expectations. It's a way to shape better citizens while protecting the community we all share. And from a planning perspective, it's also practical. 19 student units living under one organized accountable entity with alumni involvement, like with myself and Chris, is far better than 19 scattered rentals across the city with no structure at all. So a CUP, I believe, makes that accountability possible. Revoking it, I don't think would fix the problem. It removes the very tool that enables progress. And from hearing what the potential consequences could be, honestly seems like it could make the problem worse as it forces these activities underground. Not that you boys would ever do that, right? Continuing or modifying it gives us the chance to turn conflict into cooperation and set a new model for how students and residents can coexist in this town. And I think we've exemplified that by the way that they have showed up and participated in the civic participation, the process here tonight. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you so much for the time today. And thank you so much for the late evening. I know it's incredibly late, so I'll keep my remarks short. But thank you so much for all your work and for the city staff, all the work on the staff report and this evening. It's a lot of work that goes into it and we just, we really appreciate the effort. My name is Chris Nielsen. I'm on the Alumni Board of Trustees. I graduated in 2014. I was a member of the fraternity here as well. I currently is, was mentioned, live in Sacramento. The Alumni Association, you know, as, again, is a group of volunteers. You know, as, as they noted, you know, we receive some support from nationally, but for the most part, you see, it's the day-to-day members here who have jobs. They're trying to, you know, have this organization and this camaraderie. And you have folks who had such a great experience here in San Luis Obispo, you know, supporting the community, being down here, that they want to give back and make sure that this organization, which enriches the communities through community service and philanthropy, can continue to provide that experience for people that want to give back themselves. And the Alumni Association itself, although we're scattered all over the West Coast of the United States, is committed to continuing the work on this. And, you know, I appreciate all the showing you see tonight, right? But it's not just tonight. More work needs to be done, right? There's the SCLC that I know the mayor, you've been incredibly involved with and the work that needs to go into that, right? And there's all the work of the Planning Commission. And, you know, we have been trying to advise the chapter on the appropriate ways to deal, to work through this issue. And the issues that the Planning Commission raises are incredibly valid. And we want to work through how we create this collaborative solution going forward. And we want to work with all of you to try and do this. We think that providing time to table this and work together on what this appropriate framework would look like and then incorporate that as a pilot back in this CUP at the council level is the best pathway forward because it allows that collaborative conversation that you all are working on here and through SCLC to then immediately get incorporated into the CUP as a pilot versus having someone start anew by applying again, going through the Planning Commission, and then subsequently making the way to you. And through your de novo review, you have the ability to make the decisions tonight. But we're not necessarily asking to make all the decisions tonight because we know making decisions from the diocese is tough and hard. And their incredible staff have worked really hard to outline different solutions. And you'll see in your staff reports that we've outlined great solutions as well. You'll see that we propose alternatives. And by no means are they perfect. And they require a bunch of detail to make it work. And we want to work collaboratively with city staff and the community on how we can make those work, right? How are we able to make sure that, you know, if they have guests in the room or on Parents Weekend, right, it's not a violation? And we're able to work through that because we know there's real community engagement that has to occur that we want to solve. And so we want to work together, collaborate over the next months to do exactly that with you and the chapter and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. No other public comment?
No, except for the appellate time.
Almost four minutes left. Yes, yes, ma'am. Okay. And, and just as a reminder, you know, we've received a lot of comments via email and phone call and text. So just for anyone who's watching or will watch in the future, those are taken into account as well as we're talking today. So with that, I will bring it back to the council and Vice Mayor. Your turn.
Thanks. Yeah, I actually have a couple more questions to staff that sparked up. Is that okay to do those now that sparked up while the appellant was talking?
Yes, it is.
So my, my question, it was alluded to by some of the speakers, but I believe the cost, the fee for a new application is in the neighborhood of $11,000. Is that correct?
$11,260 and some change.
Okay. And if we did some creative solution where they are allowed to modify with a temporary revocation or whatever we were talking about earlier, what would that, that would be a discounted fee, correct?
Currently, modification is 25% of a fee. So I did the math already. It's $2,815 and whatever the change is.
Okay. And I know this is probably hard for you to predict. I don't know how many modifications we've done. Well, not very many because we only have 17 CUPs total, I think you said. But the amount of work, our, our fees are, our fees are created based on costs of actually doing the work to, to do the, the permit, the permit or the CUP or whatever the item is. So my question is, how much staff time does a new application take versus this potential modification? I don't know if you can answer that, Director Tway?
I can, kind of. I think that generally, a modification is more simple than what I think we would be talking about here. You know, oftentimes, people have some sort of plan that they've been working on and they want to modify it in a minor way, and that's modification. And we usually make a determination if it's substantially similar to what was before. I think we can all see that the conditions for these permits probably need a lot of work if we're going to make sure that they work for both the city and they're enforceable and reasonable, and they work for the fraternity because they're something they can live with and not violate just by doing their normal operations. So I imagine that this will take some time to work through in order to collaborate, if that's the direction, on some conditions. And we also need to make sure the conditions address the concerns that the Planning Commission and the council and the community have. And so we'll have to work through that as well. So I think this, this is a little more So I think this is a little more extensive than what I would consider a normal modification, but it would be a modification of their existing conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you so much. And I have one question for the appellants, too. Is that okay to ask now or is?
Yes, it is.
And I don't know which of you wants to try to take a stab at this, but my understanding, and granted, this is old, probably not current information because I haven't been in a fraternity or sorority for a long time, but my understanding is that there are dues and fees that members pay to be part of your organization, either on an annual basis or some periodic basis. If you don't mind sharing what's sort of the annual commitment that it costs to be a member of your group?
It is, it costs roughly $1,500 annually to be a part of our group.
Okay. And so you're.
My treasurer corrected me. It's closer to 17 or 18.
Okay. So you're saying, based on your testimony, that the $11,000 that you would need to raise to do a new permit would be above and beyond what those regular costs are?
Most of those costs goes towards insurance with our national fraternity and our nationals as well as cost to the school and the interfraternity council with our dues with them as well.
Okay. Thank you for that information. That's all my questions.
Nearly 65% of it goes to that.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you so much. All right, Councilmember Francis.
Thank you. Your treasurer was on it. I liked the information back there. It's great. I have a question for staff, kind of in a thought exercise realm. And forgive me, I know we talked a little bit about this earlier, but city manager was not there with us. And I was a little bit curious what it would look like if we just moved away from this CUP structure and process entirely and just moved into regulating the residences in the way that all the rest of the residences in the community are regulated.
Great question. So if we were to get rid of the requirement to have a CUP to be a Greek house, the code would still say that you cannot be a sorority or a fraternity in an R1 or R2 zone. So we would still need to be enforcing if we suspected that there was that happening in those zones. But you could be potentially a fraternity or sorority in the R4 and R3 zones. We would just not require you to have a conditional use permit. So then what would govern the behavior would be the same thing that governs the behavior of every other apartment complex or structure that's in those zones. So again, as the police department stated, if anyone gets a noise call, they go out and investigate whether or not it's a fraternity or just an apartment complex, and they would get a noise violation. The difference would be that at that time, the community development department wouldn't get involved because there wouldn't necessarily be a land use violation to revoke a CUP, if that makes sense.
It does. And remind me, they're in R4, correct?
Yes.
So that restriction wouldn't necessarily apply to this particular fraternity or any of their neighboring fraternities or sororities. They could technically exist in the sense that they could have signage, but unruly gatherings, gatherings that exceeded a certain size, noise violations, all those things would just be regulated as they normally would be, correct?
We do have a code section that also regulates fraternities and sororities. And Mallory and Rachel, can you clarify that that is just regulatory and not only if they have a CUP? Does that question make sense?
It does. It's Section 1786. Jump in there.
Can you read a little bit about what those are? So we do have some code language that says some general operating standards, I believe, for fraternities and sororities. So I believe that could still be in place. We can regulate through the zoning code. Again, the difference would be you don't need this conditional use permit, and then we wouldn't have the ability to have unique conditions for unique sites or unique situations. It would be kind of broad stroke regulations on these types of uses.
But it would still be the one resident per 60 square feet of building area and all the rest of the regulations that exist in that code.
Yeah, 1786-130.
Yes. The difference would, truly, the difference would be the ability to have hearings like this and the ability to have unique conditions to address unique situations. Thank you.
City manager, did you have input on this same part of the conversation?
Thank you. It was really just that same point, that you can embed a number of operational restrictions into the zoning ordinance and allow the use. As long as you identify it as some kind of use that needs some type of regulation in the zoning code, you could then say it's allowed, subject to a bunch of operational requirements. It's just that you wouldn't be able to, let's say you had neighboring uses literally next door to each other. That would be potentially like just a really bad idea to have a fraternity right next door to, like, say, a nursery or who knows? And maybe that would be fine, but you wouldn't have an opportunity to say yes or no to that use. And then the public wouldn't have an opportunity to weigh in on that as well. So you wouldn't be having a public hearing. We would just then be responding to the same issues with citation to that regulatory framework that's built into the code. It could be more restrictive than just any R3 or R4 property because of the type of use. We would still have to prove that it is that type of use. And we would want to, assuming that this kind of activity or use is something that we want to regulate, and I think we're hearing from a lot of folks in non-R3 and R4 zones, that it is very impactful there. And so that's where you start to know, okay, we need to have some type of additional regulation on this land use. What does that look like? There's lots of different ways that it could look like, but you can do it without requiring use permit.
But since we're talking about, you know, a lot of the concerns are coming from the R1 and R2 zones. We're talking about fraternities and sororities are only allowed in the R3, R4. So the removal of the CUP process doesn't necessarily then change what's happening in the R1 and R2 zones.
Absolutely. You're right.
Okay. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you. Councilmember Boswell.
Are we just doing questions or can we get into discussion? Okay, go ahead.
All right, Councilmember Marx.
Yes, I have a question for the Delta Chi, I guess the president. I'm not sure. Whoever your spokesperson is. Yeah. A couple of different times and different settings, you guys have made the request to have more time to work through possible changes in conditions with city staff. And I just learned that the new officers take charge in June, right? So my concern is that turnover could be a problem in terms of how long it would take. So what, my question for you is, how long do you imagine would be a reasonable amount of time to try to work things through with staff? And could that be done under the present slate of officers? Because one of the conditions of having such a large student population in our city is that you just make relationships with people, and then they graduate, which is great. But that constant turnover sometimes prevents constructive conversation.
Yeah, and I totally understand that concern in terms of timeline. I think that we are eager to be able to find a solution as quick as possible in terms of the turnover with new executive board every year. You know, one of the big parts why everyone behind me is here is because many of these guys are hoping to be able to take, if they're not seniors, be able to take positions next year where they're making the decisions, and they wanted to be here to learn more about this to where we're able to have a smoother transition and understanding of this topic when ultimately we graduate next June.
So you don't have a specific time, amount of time that, from your point of view, would be reasonable to accomplish these changes?
I think that we also have the alumni board, which I was just reminded that stays the same every year, no matter what. And so they've been a huge help in this, and they will continue to help whoever is the one who's in charge and making the decision. So the alumni board is a big help in this. And then in terms of timeline, I mean, I can't. The goal is to have something by this year where we're all still here. But it's not only up to us, unfortunately.
No, but just to say it before the next St. Patrick's Day, for instance.
I would love that, as much as you guys would, too. So.
Just asking.
I would love that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to bring in city manager real quick before we go to you, Councilmember Boswell.
Thank you. I just wanted to offer and maybe suggest or recommend that to the extent that the citations that were issued related to St. Patrick's Day weekend or St. Fratelli's Day, and then if there's consideration of even the most recent citation, we do have our police department personnel here. I believe Deputy Chief Dickel or Deputy Chief Amoroso could speak to their, the facts, according to the police department from those two incidents because we certainly had a very different take on that. But it's up to council, depending on how relevant that is and the information you might want to have in front of you. We do have staff here who could help fill that in.
Sounds good. I probably would like to hear that. If there's no other questions, we're going to take a five-minute break before we get into deliberation. Any other questions? Vice Mayor? I see no movement. Okay. Wonderful. Well, we'll see you back in about five minutes. All right. Thank you for the quick break. We're back together. Thank you, Vice Mayor. See you. So we'll move over to Councilmember Boswell. Actually, let me ask you a question. Do you have any more questions or is it just deliberation time?
I'm ready for deliberation.
Okay. So at that point, I'll offer to the appellant, was it three minutes and 45 seconds? If you had liked to come up and share anything more.
Yeah, I promise it won't be the full four minutes. Thank you all for taking the time. I know it's getting late, but it's clear that both the city and the neighborhood want a solution that balances accountability with progress, and we share that goal. Delta Chi has made every effort to be a good partner, proposing creative and responsible ways to improve the situation. These proposals reflect our genuine intent to collaborate and evolve. We also recognize that our ideas aren't perfect, and we welcome the opportunity to keep working with city staff and the community to refine them, help shaping a stronger, more enforceable framework for student housing in San Luis Obispo. The staff report makes clear that the city council has the ability to direct staff to work with the appellant on these solutions and return at a later date with a revised conditional use permit and updated findings. We've heard that the council values this kind of collaboration, and we want to be a part of it. We are simply asking tonight that the item be tabled rather than denied so the progress can continue without forcing our members to start from square one at a cost of more than $11,000. We believe that that's the fair, constructive, and community-minded path forward. Thank you for your time, your partnership, and your consideration.
Thank you so much. And then if Chief Dickel or Deputy Chief Amoroso, if you want to come up and share your responses to the noise citations and St. Patrick's Day as well.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council members. Although I appreciate the civic engagement of everybody, just wanted to clarify a few points. There are some specific things that were mentioned, namely, the very last citation on October 4th. That actually occurred at 02:38 in the morning, so 2:38 a.m. And there was 10 people in the center courtyard area, many of whom took off as the officers arrived. And so when that citation was issued, it was really early in the morning and involved the complex. As I prepared for tonight, I looked back over what would I would consider a typical data set, about two years, to get a perspective of how many citations might have been issued in that period of time. And I think the mention earlier from Delta Chi was in the last year. And I take that to mean probably the college school year. But so looking at since 2023, there's actually been 17 complaints of noise violations there where we issued 10 different citations over a two-and-a-half-year period or so. But I think they are characterizing that correctly of the school year following because it jumped from May of '24 and then again to March of '25. So just to add some perspective to that, there was 10 citations and 17 responses to noise. There was also on the October 4th, I mentioned to the SNAP program, which is a program associated through the police department, that they were the complainants on that case, and that's not the case. Our SNAP program, our initial responders, to go find out if there's a violation. That complaint came from a community member that called in to make the complaint. SNAP verified that there was a complaint that they weren't going to handle, and then it turned, went to the police officers who responded and issued that citation. If you go back to St. Fratelli's Day, being here during that operation and watching the events unfold throughout the day with the 350 officers and the huge staff involvement that was here, the only real big party that we dealt with was the one at Montevista at Delta Chi. And the officers on scene from outside, I made an estimate of 100 people. But I would offer to you, from the aerial footage, through our tech, watching what had happened, the number would be two or three times that amount of people that were there. And there was some mention towards the police department had limited the chaining on the doors and that they should remove those chains. Certainly, that was actually something that officers said when they found out there was chains on the door, worried about a fire or some other emergency. But that was at the time of issuance of citation, after 4 o'clock in the morning. And so looking back over what's happened over a two-and-a-half-year period or since the beginning of '23, the amount of citations is quite considerable. I don't know how it would compare to another similar property. That's a difficult question to ask. And then I just wanted to clarify, St. Patrick's Day or St. Fratelli's Day, and then, of course, that last citation. And unless you guys have any other questions, that'll cover it for.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, with that, now we'll go to Councilmember Boswell for to kick off our deliberation.
All right. Thank you. Thank you to staff and everybody who provided some testimony tonight and for the extensive report. All very helpful. I'm just going to start out first by kind of going through our different options we have, including, I guess, our number four now, our new option, giving some thoughts here. So I'm going to start with the staff recommendation. You know, the line of questioning I had earlier was trying to understand what the case would be if there's not a CUP on this property. It certainly seems to me like the staff recommendation does little to improve the current situation where we simply would not have a CUP on the property. The CUP gives us more tools to manage the property. But I don't think it gives us many more tools, and I think there are a whole set of problems with it. So I don't see staff recommendation as a viable solution because I think we are going to need some additional tools to manage the situation. I'm just not sure what that path is. But I'm concerned about kind of, you know, doing nothing, if you will. That said, if you look at number three, alternative number three, which is kind of at the other end of the spectrum, which is to retain the existing use permit, that's. end of the spectrum, which is to retain the existing use permit, that's definitely not a viable option either. The current use permit, which is the '98 use permit, is not well-written. And in fact, I, it's, if you read it, it's actually fairly permissive of events and parties. It basically says you can have events and parties, you just have to submit a list to the Community Development Director at the beginning of the year. So I don't see that as a viable option either, which leaves us with two and three, and I suppose, excuse me, it leaves us with, oh, excuse me, number one, let me speak to one. Number one is simply continue the review of the appeal to get additional analysis and information, but not to work on a solution. So I don't think we need, I don't think that gets us much anywhere either. So that leaves us with number two, or this, I guess, new option as well, which is to somehow basically send staff back to continue to work on a possible CUP. But I'll admit, I'm also very concerned about whether this is something that could result in a mutually agreeable solution. When I think about what's happening here with the CUP, if you think about the fraternity house, I think you can think about it as three different things. One is it's a residence. It's just we're a group of people who typically happen to be in an affiliated organization or living. And as we know, as a city, we have, there's limited, limited things we can do in terms of regulating just a residence and people living together. What turns it into a fraternity house, I think, is at least two things. And so a second way we can think about it is it's effectively an administrative office, if you will, right? It's a place the fraternity hangs their letters there, I assume they get their mail there, they manage their records, maintain their physical assets, probably have their management meetings, those kinds of things. I don't think anybody's too concerned about those. They likely rarely produce any kind of, you know, negative impacts on the neighborhood. It's akin to a home business or home office. And then there's a third version of, the third role of the fraternity house, which is probably what most people think of, which is a place for parties and events. Under the current, the '98 CUP, those are sort of allowed, although with some control by the Community Development Director. The proposed changes that were before the Planning Commission tightened that up, I believe, by calling out a special event permit that would be required proactively for each event and required, had some conditions on it, including a traffic management plan. But it seems to me that whereas the first two are fine, the third is not. We're talking about residential neighborhoods. I looked through our code as to what other land uses are allowed in a residential neighborhood. It's mostly, of course, what you typically think of as residential uses, but there are some thing, some other things in there. And one that caught my eye was bed and breakfast. Because I thought, oh, okay, bed and breakfast, that's, you know, I'd probably have weddings at those places, and they probably have events, right? Actually, they do not. If you read the conditions on bed and breakfast, they explicitly prohibit events. So as far as I could tell, we have no other residential zoning category where we permit parties and big events, except for fraternities under some conditions that are managed by the Community Development Director. So, you know, this is a little bit bigger issue than the one in front of us, but I think this is the, the critical issue, is the, the events and the permission to do events is what's resulting in the violations of the CUP primarily, and what is making it hard to make any findings that would allow us to continue the CUP. I mean, this is what the Planning Commission essentially made their decision on, was those particular kinds of violations of the CUP. So I admit, I'm left a little stumped as to what is our best solution here. I'm, I'm generally inclined to, you know, continue to try to work on a solution, particularly if I don't see clearly one in front of me. It's like, okay, well, I guess we gotta go back and continue some work on this. But I'm interested in what my fellow councilmembers have to say and what your thoughts are. But that's sort of where I am for the moment, hoping for some clarity from everyone.
Thank you so much. I hope you have that clarity as well. Councilmember Francis?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Boswell. I think you articulated a lot of my thought process over this last week or so pretty well there. And of course, thank you to all the staff that worked hard on, on this report and all of you who came out and did public comment today. It's actually just awesome to see people out at a city council meeting and getting involved, so I appreciate that. And this has been a little bit of a tricky one for me. You know, frankly, the location of this fraternity is about as ideal as it gets, as far as insulation from the R1 and R2 residences, where we typically hear the, the most concern from neighborhoods, and rightly so. And I was really heartened to hear from the fraternity members that they had, you know, the desire to keep their CUP because they wanted to be in compliance with city regulations, which is, you know, a good reason to want to have it in place. But as I've thought about it and actually spent some time talking through this with staff today, I'm increasingly inclined just to move away from this process entirely. And it kind of comes back to something you said earlier, Councilmember Boswell, like what additional regulatory benefits are we getting out of this? Is the juice worth the squeeze? And hearing how much time staff and the Planning Commission and council and you all are spending on this process, it's starting to feel like we're putting in a lot of energy to not necessarily get additional benefits out of it. And I think there was a push historically from the city to encourage these CUPs, you know, to bring everybody into compliance, but then we ended up with this patchwork of CUPs that date from different eras, like this one. And it's just a, kind of a staff nightmare to try and manage all of those variances and, you know, the behaviors that are most concerning that we're trying to regulate, namely like noise and unruly gatherings, are things that we can regulate without this in place. So it starts to feel like, what are we doing here? We do have an issue with neighborhood livability, and I want to be really clear about that, but, and particularly in our R1 and R2 neighborhoods, but we're spending all of these resources on a limited number of CUPs in R3 and R4 zones. So it's a huge taxpayer expense without a lot to show for it. And if we did away with this, you know, fraternities and sororities would still be able to use their residences as intended to, you know, live in, as you said, one of the purposes of these. They'd have to find space to host meetings and special events, but really with the new regulations we're talking about, that would still be the case, since especially they were restricted to 54 people before. So I, I guess I'd be curious to see if the rest of the council might be inclined to move away from this CUP process and continue to work on neighborhood livability and maybe now have some light and load on some of our staff and additional resources to be able to reallocate to solving the problem in a more proactive way. And I'll leave it there for now.
Thank you. Before I go to Councilmember Marks, can you remind me, are we bringing back the Greek Life Work Program the end of Q4?
I will need to pull up the agenda forecast, but we are planning on, it's not specific to Greek Life, but we are planning on having a study, sorry?
Thank you.
May 21st, a study session on code enforcement. And so this would, could be wrapped into that conversation because a lot of code enforcement resources are used for this issue. Is, is this an appropriate use to run down CUPs with code enforcement, or do we want to move away from that?
Perfect. Thank you very much. Councilmember Marks?
Thank you. Well, I think I, I might have more clarity than some people. I lived in this neighborhood for 33 years. I did want to address one issue about R1, R2, and R3 and R4. The noise does not pay attention to what zone you're in. So I, as somebody who lived on Albert Drive, which is now kind of ground zero, right? Our house was bought by, it's now a satellite fraternity. When we moved away, when the neighborhood became so dominated by student population, was no longer a well-integrated mixed neighborhood. So, the noise from that side of town definitely does affect the R1 neighborhoods. I heard a lot of, give us another chance, we want to collaborate. I didn't hear any remorse. I didn't hear any apologies for what the, the record, really the track record that this particular fraternity has created for itself. And I know you're all bright and perform well academo, academically, sometimes get the award for the highest GPA, I read about that. But here's what I would propose. I propose that we deny the appeal, but place a condition on it that gives them a chance to come up with modifications within a certain time period. And if they, during that time, during that interim, when they're working with staff, to come up with some modifications for their CUP, which they've said they want, and I think they should have, if there's a noise violation or an unruly gathering during that time, then the revocation is complete. We're no longer, we're not, not working with them anymore. Because I believe it's important to set standards and hold people accountable, especially young people who are gonna go out into the world and do all kinds of wonderful things. And if we kind of enable and jolly along and, oh yeah, you tried, you really tried, you know, I, to me, this, this track record that's been established does not show good faith, even paying attention to the fact that all these citations are happening. You managed to come up with the money to pay for the tickets, but, you know, and the money to buy the alcohol for the parties, you know? But I can understand the financial stress. So I just want to say that 10 different citations in a two-year period and one unruly gathering, to me, it doesn't feel like this particular fraternity has really made an effort for self-discipline. And I believe that's really an important part of the adult, the process of becoming an adult. And I do feel that the CUP is an important tool that the city has. We're the only city in the county that has this particular sort of problem. This is a problem. You know, none of the other cities are having to deal with this. Cal Poly has said that they want to expand the number of fraternities and sororities that they allow. We're now hearing that there's going to be 130, 140 Delta Chies in the spring. This is a problem that I think we need to take a firm stand on now and not enable continuation of a party culture pattern that is really deeply destructive to our city. It is, neighborhood livability is a major city goal, and if it takes staff time and resources to address it, I think it's a good use of money. So that's, that's where I'm standing right now. Basically, reject the appeal and give them, I would like to hear from staff, what a reasonable amount of time is. I'm just thinking six months because I would love to be able to see this particular cohort of students to work with staff, rather than having it just continue and continue and continue. So, and then not, going to Mr. Boswell's earlier point, not charge them the $11,050 and change to reapply, but do charge them the $2,550 for the modification. Set a, give a time certain, six months would put us pretty close to St. Patrick's Day. Maybe that's five months. And, and then if there's another noise violation or unruly gathering during that time, forget the modification, go right back to you have to apply again with $11,000 if you want to. So to me, that's accountability. And I do want to say that I have a wonderful son who was fraternity member in, in Santa Barbara when he went to UCSB, and I do understand the value of the fraternity experience to young men growing up. So it's not that I am anti-fraternity, it's this particular fraternity's track record in this particular city of San Luis Obispo. I think we have to just stand up and be counted and grow a spine. That's what I think.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, before I make my comments, I kind of want to get a little bit of clarification from Councilmember Marks on, I think I'm still having a little bit of trouble understanding how we would revoke, revoke the CUP, but yet give them time.
Let me type in, let me put in the city manager.
You said it before.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I know you explained it before, sorry, but.
No, I, I'm just gonna say, we, we actually do have some language that other people who are very skilled and smarter than me have put together, that I think it's like Councilmember Marks was reading our minds when we put it together as well. And so we're happy to put it up on the screen. It really helped me as well to see how it's structured and the language that we're using. And so if this is a good time, we'd be happy to do that. And actually, the, the remark about, we, we had included a condition essentially about citations that could be received about noise. I think adding unruly gatherings in there would be a good idea, and so we, we're, we're happy to show that and.
Yes, please do show it. Thank you. City Attorney, did you want to add to this?
I was just gonna note, I think we drafted it as two violations during the period of conditional revocation, but certainly that's at the council's discretion and that can be altered at your direction.
So I, if I may, I think the key piece is section one, so the, the, in general, the action before you would be changed to a resolution of the city council, the city seal in Luis Obispo, denying an appeal and conditionally revoking the use permit. And then we talk in this section down in, go back down to the bottom, about what that means, because it's a little unusual. And so it would say, denies the appeal, conditionally revokes the use permit. Use as a fraternity shall cease immediately upon execution of this resolution, so they would not be able to continue operating. However, the applicant may, within 60 days of this decision, apply for a modification of the conditionally used permit, accompanied by the modification fee. When we were thinking about this, our intent was to get them to apply as soon as possible, which is the 60 days. We can talk about, you know, approval or consideration timelines. My concern is just the amount of time it will take to work through this, so that is something they can control, is the 60 days, so that's why we put that in there. If the application to reestablish the CUP is timely filed, it shall be heard by the Planning Commission and then with recommendation of the city council. Let's see, and again, I just want to remind everyone, this would be an application, does not mean it's ultimately approved. This is an application, the Planning Commission and the city council still have the discretion as to whether they would approve it or not. Let's see, can you keep going down, please? Should the city council deny the application for modification, this revocation shall immediately become final. So if it comes back to you and you deny it, revocation's final. If the applicant fails to submit the application as If the applicant fails to submit the application as set forth above, it is final. They would have the ability to come in and apply for a new use permit, as we already discussed. And then we added number three. If during the period of conditional revocation, two noise or unruly gathering citations are issued related to any activity on the property, the conditional revocation shall become permanent immediately upon exhaustion of appeals. So they still have the ability to appeal those, but if it's upheld, it would become permanent. So that gives it some teeth in terms of what happens between then and now. So that is the bulk of the changed language. The rest of the changed language throughout the resolution just refers to the conditional revocation as opposed to the revocation.
Thank you. I appreciate that language.
And Director Twain, oh, sorry.
No, I was gonna say, we'll go back to deliberations before we continue to go back to this, pretty please. Director Twain, I believe Vice Mayor still has some more questions for you.
Just because I'm not able to read and digest this and I'm kind of going off your summary. When you say if there was, you know, two unruly gatherings and the conditional revocation would become permanent, do you mean that then they couldn't apply for a new CUP? Or just that one would become permanently revoked?
We mean that this one would become permanently revoked and their alternative, what they would need to do to continue to be a fraternity at that site would be to apply for a new CUP. So we would no longer be working with them under this modification process. They would have to reapply.
But once, okay, so if they, if they, if they applied for their modification within 60 days, what I heard you saying before was that your concern was that the modifications that they were desiring would take a lot of staff time to potentially work through. Is that still the case? Or would there be a time limit on how long they had to work through?
So my preference would be to regulate the things they can control. They can control when they come in and reapply. I am almost certain that they will want to have a use permit as soon as humanly possible in order to be a fraternity at that site. So I imagine they will be working toward getting their modification approved. And so I'm not that concerned about that because it is conditionally revoked during that time. We could consider some ultimate hearing. I just think, given the scheduling of the Planning Commission and the City Council, what I don't want is for something out of their control, like City Council calendars, to impact their conditional revocation, even though they are doing everything they can to move it forward. So that is why I would recommend not having an ultimate timeline for approval.
Okay. Thanks for those questions. Do you want me to continue with my comments, Mayor?
Yes, yes, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, so this is a lot to digest. I think first of all, I want to start out by commending the members of Delta Chi and their alumni for being here tonight, for trying to work through this. I generally am a huge advocate, as Councilmember Francis kind of implied. We're all generally advocates for people participating in the public process. So I'm glad to see you all doing that tonight. I kind of wish it was under different circumstances, but here we are. And there is, there is no denying the fact that fraternities and sororities have a very definite positive impact on our community. They do a lot of community service. They, they and the university students in general create a sense of vibrancy in our community that I know I am personally grateful for. And I'm always glad to have the university as our neighbor, even though there are some difficulties and conflicts that we sometimes have to work through. But I believe that you all are contributing members of our community. And in general, I'm glad that you're here. I, I can empathize and understand Councilmember Francis and Boswell's frustrations with just this process in general. It seems messy and like it doesn't really fit for both the people holding the use permits and the city. There are complications in it for both parties. And yet it feels like, besides police enforcement, it's sort of one of the only tools that we have to kind of benefit both parties in some way. It gives us a few more enforcement mechanisms and it gives them, the organization, some ability to do things that they wouldn't normally be able to do. So I am hesitant to just say we're gonna kind of throw the baby out with the bathwater right now because then we're here and what do we do with this particular situation? I, I hope that maybe when we look at this again in May, we can address some of these thoughts or come up with some creative solutions. We are not the only community with the university in our backyard or in our, in our neighborhood that has fraternities and sororities. So I know staff has lots of contacts in other areas. And I know whenever I go to a community that has a university, I ask questions about that, which I am doing right now because I have a senior in high school. So hopefully someday, he will be experiencing a university experience that's productive as well. In terms of what to do going forward, I, I'm, think I'm generally of the mind that, as staff has pointed out, it's hard to revoke and still move forward, but they have created a way of doing that. So I commend you all for coming up with this language. I think where I'm still having the problem is the fee. And I'm concerned that staff are gonna spend a lot of time working through this with the fraternity. And we have our fees for a reason. And I know we're calling this a modification, but based on the proposals that we got and the difficulty with implementing them, I think this is gonna take a lot of refinement from staff and it's essentially gonna be the same amount of work as a new, or close to the same amount of work as a new application. So I am concerned about setting a precedence in that way with this particular situation. And when I do the math, I completely understand the financial impacts of this. You all are young students. You have lots of expenses. College is expensive. Being a part of a fraternity or sorority is clearly expensive based on the fees that you all said you already incur. And then I think of a group, you know, just doing the quick math. If you've got 100 people, it's $110 for 11,000. If you divided it up amongst 100 people, it's for an $11,000 fee, it's $110. And if you each, and if you expand your membership by 20 or 30 more people, then it's less. So granted, I understand it's still a lot of money for my 17-year-old. It's still a lot of money for me. It's still a lot of money. But it's not as, it's not a ridiculous amount of money for what I think you will get out of it and quite frankly, what the community will get out of it because you will all be helping us build something that is a model, hopefully, that, that we can use in the future that is more agreeable to fraternities and sororities and, and is hopefully agreeable to the community as well. So I'm leaning away from the modification fee because I'm concerned about the time and commitment of staff. And I also think it's important to have some accountability measures. I like the number three stipulation in the language that was proposed. Although I think our community members who we've been hearing from for a very long time on these noise and unruly gathering issues would say, "You're gonna give them two more noise or unruly gatherings before you actually do something about this?" And I'm struggling a little bit with that piece as well. I would be inclined to take it down to one. You know, there, we've, I feel that staff have already been extremely gracious, I guess is the word. I don't know, patient with noise violations and have given multiple chances already. We heard the record from the last couple of years on this particular location, and that's only one location that city staff have responded to over the last couple of years. And I think our community residents are tired. And we've, we've been patient already. So I, I would, if we're gonna go with this language, I'm still on the fence, but if we're gonna go with this language proposed, my two cents would be that there would be one, one more violation before it was revoked permanently and they had to kind of start over again. So I'll leave it there and see what others have to say, but that's kind of where I'm at. Thank you.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. I'm gonna share my two cents and then I see we have a whole list of people to go through around again. As per usual, this is not easy. I'll be honest, my initial thought when I saw that there was a St. Patrick's Day citation, I'm like, "There's no other reason to have a conversation now because I'm done." After the community has asked for help over and over and over again. And this was, like I said, kind of that no-fly zone. And then there was still a gathering that day. I just thought, "Why are we even having this conversation?" But that being said, I listened to the whole Planning Commission meeting and we have a problem. Unless someone violates, unless a fraternity violates the CUP, we really have no way to have this conversation. And that's kind of where we've, where I think we've ended up, which is community members being frustrated and irritated with things being in their yard that shouldn't be after a party or during a party, loud noise waking them up, not allowing them to go to school or work. You know, I could go on and on with the list. I'm pretty sure you've heard most of this list. And we also have an aspect of, there's not a single noise that can be made without getting a call. We've received calls on all sorts of things. You know, eight-year-olds playing, playing basketball, college students playing basketball, quinceañeras, barbecues, all sorts of things. There isn't also this aspect of how do we have a conversation about noise and neighborhood livability, which is part of why we have this conversation coming to us in May. So when I look at, do we even want a CUP? We keep talking about conditional use permit. Does this even matter? Why do we care? And it seems like this is one of the few and only tools we have. So if we don't have a conditional use permit, how do we move forward as a city? Cal Poly had in their, their named master plan, "A Greek Row for the Future." And then there was a point where it was like, "That's never happening." So we could always ask what happened to the plan, but I think reality is there's all different new plans at Cal Poly at this point. We, for otherwise, the roundaround town and gown grand jury and public comments, or whether it was public comments and commissioner comments in the Planning Commission, it has been about how do we change what the fraternities are doing so that Cal Poly will finally do something? And that's what I heard over and over again from the public and the commissioners. So I think that in revoking this conditional use permit, it was twofold. It was discipline and holding people accountable for not following the community rules and conditional use permit rules and the city's rules, but also the community trying to hold Cal Poly available, I mean, sorry, accountable. So I think we have kind of a challenging conversation here that's, that's not fully able to be had here, is there's a conversation that needs to be had out in the community with community members, Greek organizations, the university, the city, all together, sitting down, which seems almost like an impossible task. I get that's incredibly kumbaya and good luck with that. But that's, that's, I think, realistically the problem. We're not able to all be at the table at the same time and have this conversation to solve it. I have mixed feelings about the cost. I hear you, Vice Mayor. On one hand, you can pay $1,000 to $2,000 a year. What's another thousand? Because you're gonna pay that in citations anyway. But I think because Delta Chi's members are willing to work with us and try to come up with modifications that are useful, I'm willing to say, "Yes, let's help their community. Let's help their fraternity members. Let's do this modification cost, the 20, approximately $2,800, so that we can all move forward together." That is something that I think is a possibility. I also, though, do agree as far as what Vice Mayor just said. Yeah, there's already been so many citations and issues that in number three there, as far as the conditional revocation, it would be one noise or unruly gathering. And with that, there's these conversations about, so Delta Chi was brought to us when they were in the middle of an appeal, but yet the CDD director already had put in motion there was a violation. So they come to the Planning Commission for having their permit revoked. But they were in the middle of appeal as well. So we have this like constant, like, just in the middle of one cog and keep, keep on going with another road at the same time. And that just, it doesn't make a lot of sense. So I know that what I'm making, what I'm saying feels like it doesn't make a lot of sense because I feel like we have so many issues at once. So to me, I would be comfortable with this concept of the upholding the appeal or denying the appeal with the revocation being a conditional revocation. I like the idea of this 60 days that gives that back in Delta Chi's hands. Says, "Do you want to do this? Let's do this together. Let's move forward together." At the same time, we have the Greek Life Work Program or the Community Work-Life Program, whatever, however we want to say that, May 21st with code enforcement. I feel like we could say a date certain because we do have kind of till the end of the school year because otherwise we start all over again in June, as Councilmember Marks said. So as we talk about this, there are some obvious end dates, it seems, between our code enforcement conversation and the end of the school year. It seems like that would be the obvious end date. But that's just my two cents on that. Let me just make sure I've got everything in here. So I think the, oh, the last part I think too is, so we've had a lot of conversations about what happens. I mean, the members are not gonna move out of their multifamily housing. That's not logical. So if we don't do this modification and actually try to work together on this, what's the point? Where do we go from there? And so to me, I think that the revocation, I think, goes back to what our community members have asked. Hold them accountable. No more, no more noise violations, no more unruly gatherings. And Delta Chi, how do we move forward? Let's do this together. I think that's the only decent compromise I can come up with. But I definitely think we still, again, are here without all of the members, all the members at the table trying to solve this problem. I know there's some conversations between Student Affairs and the other administrators at Cal Poly, along with our city manager and a couple of other members of the staff, which hopefully will result in some better experiences going forward. But we're not at liberty to say what all of that is yet. So it feels a little bit like there's things in the works, but we can't say. That, that just doesn't, it doesn't help our community feel like, "Oh, got it. You've fixed, you fixed that problem." So I understand Cal Poly will feel frustrated at this point that they're like, "Oh, but we're working on something, but the community doesn't know what that is. So here we are." So I do hope that we continue to work together with the university, with our police department, with our community development department, with the fraternities, with IFC, USFC and Panalenic, and with our staff. So with that, I'll move forward to Councilmember Francis.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I'm hearing a little bit of a leaning towards this conditional revocation. And I guess it just brings up some questions for me because if we go through that process of conditional revocation, then we're back at Planning Commission and then back to Council and then potentially back at Planning Commission again if there's another violation later, which realistically, with a fraternity of this size, kind of feels inevitable. Not that I'm saying you're gonna fail, just there's a lot of people that are gonna, you know, potentially make mistakes. On the other hand, if we do our traditional enforcement through noise complaints and landlord citations and then potentially also explore other innovative legal solutions that I know we're gonna be able to be talking about in May. that I know we're going to be able to be talking about in May, there are other ways we can handle these types of situations. And I'm still struggling to understand what the CUP gains for us as a council. If our real focus is neighborhood livability, we're kind of just doing process for process sake right now, without coming up with a real solution. The CUP hasn't solved the noise problem, so why would continuing the CUP be the answer to that? And then, you know, ultimately, if Delta Chi doesn't come back with another application for a CUP after it's revoked, then where are we at that point? So, that kind of feels like, we're going to go in circles here. So, that'd be my question back for you guys, is, do we feel like this conditional revocation actually gets us closer to a solution?
Before I go to Councilmember Marks, there wouldn't be a back to the Planning Commission if there was a violation, because then it would be automatically revoked. That's what the new conditional change would be. City Manager, did you want to add to that?
Sure, yes. So the way that this is written at this point, is it would be automatically revoked at that point. And then, as mentioned by Director Tway, the repercussions of that is, there would need to be a whole new CUP applied for after that point. There's one just kind of bigger-picture conundrum, there's a lot in this situation, clearly. Without a use permit, if we were to, I mean, we would have to amend our code completely to no longer require a use permit for this use. And if we wanted to regulate it at all, which I would recommend that we do, given the needs and issues being raised in the community, what will end up happening is, the things that you see in the use permits, that we would want to work into an operational standard, would then become violations, right? So if you have a certain, maybe a certain number of noise citations, or unruly gathering citations over a period of time, whatever period of time that might be, we would be in the code enforcement arena perpetually, and without a hook to bring them in through a public process, with the requirement for a process, a fee, in order to get that done. And so, all we would be looking at is the code enforcement arm of our tools. And so, those include administrative citations, potentially criminal citations, and lawsuits, right? So, it's essentially shifting the work from the planning side of our house into the code enforcement side of the house, and certainly the city attorney's office, and the police department, which was already happening, of course. So, the time that we spend on use permits is definitely part of it, but that, I don't know how much overall time we would truly save. In addition to, we already know we need to do a lot of kind of education and outreach to fraternities and sororities that are operating, considering operating, letting them know about our rules, our standards, and requirements. At least, there's an idea that at least with a use permit, there's an actual document that they can see and have, and potentially, same, I suppose, would be the case with a code. It's just, hey, are you considering establishing, or maintaining, or operating a fraternity or sorority in the city? We've got some information for you, and here's the set of rules that apply. It's, you know, whether a use permit's required for that or not, is a little, maybe less clear, but this way typically, and you see that in this use permit, the requirement for an event calendar essentially to be submitted, it does put the onus on the property owner, the user, the applicant, to actually do that work, rather than staff kind of trying to chase people down. It's obviously an imperfect system, but I just wanted to kind of throw out those additional considerations. And then ultimately, of course, at the end of the day, we do need to do something with this use permit that's in front of you. The bigger question's about to have a use permit at all or not, certainly, we can dive into more, but I just wanted to make sure those, the practical enforcement, and that I just made those points. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks.
Thank you. Yes, this is a difficult situation for everyone, but we're the city council, and we have to make a decision tonight. And we're going to make a decision tonight. And here's what I think we should do. I think we should give Delta Chi the chance that they're asking for, which is a chance to modify the conditions to their conditional use permit. But we should do it in such a way that holds them accountable, we should, I really appreciate this offered language by staff, and I'll tell you, I didn't know about this before tonight, so, this is really the kind of, in a way, it's a compromise, but on the other hand, it's also holding people accountable. I'd say one violation, and this would require the fraternity to exert a great deal of peer pressure on each other to just, you know, fly right, whatever you want to call it, just be disciplined about how you use your home, which is in a city, which is a city that treasures your presence, and I know that you treasure being in the city. The other thing is that I want to say, to me, it's not a noise problem, and we're not talking about a noise problem. We're talking about a lack of consideration for your neighbors on the part of the fraternity. It's not the community's noise problem, it's the fraternity's problem, because they're not able to control themselves as young men. And that's something they need to learn. If we wanted to, I like what staff has suggested in this language, that it's during the period, let's see, during, whether it's flexibility in terms of time, rather than putting a date certain for the completion of this process, but perhaps we could say, hopefully, within the present academic year, or something like that. So I'm prepared to make a motion when the time is right. Oh, the other thing I really want to say is that it's important that the city council and the community gets to have a say in the regulation of fraternities and sororities. If we just shoved it all onto code enforcement, I think it would be much, much less humane. I think it'd be less of a community, less of an educational experience for the student-age people. And also, it would cut the public, the general public, out of the equation, because it's important, these public hearings are important. I know this is an educational experience for our fraternity members, but also for the public who are watching, and who are going to watch the tape. So, basically, my motion would be to take the language that's been proposed, accept, say, one violation rather than two in point number three. And I'll just end it right there.
Thank you. Councilmember Boswell.
It does seem like if we're going to move forward with one of these recommendations that would potentially revisit the CUP, that we should also be providing some direction to staff about what we want to see in that CUP, correct? As opposed to just go figure it out and come back to us? Still trying to decide if I'm going to support this idea, but I do, I appreciate this language, this is very helpful. All right, let me speak to a few issues there then. I mean, I think generally what had been proposed for Planning Commission was pretty good. However, I probably have three main issues. One is, again, as I mentioned, this is a residential zoning category, and I think there should be no provision for special events. We don't allow this in any of other of our, as far as I can tell, any of other allowed uses in residential categories allows this kind of event, including ones that would almost make logical sense to allow some events, like a bed and breakfast, for example. I think it needs to affirm then that the primary use here is residential, with some secondary use associated with administrative tasks, consistent with managing essentially a business in a sense. Which leads me to my second idea. I would like to see in that, that we also affirm requirement for the property owner to have a business license, which is my understanding in the city of Slow, if you are a landlord and you rent property, you're required to have a business license. But I also think we should explore whether the fraternity should have a business license as well. They're a nonprofit organization, doing business within the city of San Luis Obispo. My understanding is, generally, most nonprofit organizations in the city of Slow have a business license, are required to have a business license. There's probably some gray area there, but I'd ask staff to look into that. The final thing I would provide staff direction is that, and this is going to be, I think, maybe the most challenging, is there's going to have to be administrative simplicity and enforceability. I think that's a challenge, part of the challenge right now, with certainly the 1998 version, maybe less so with the modified one that went to the Planning Commission, but, you know, it's clear that we've had challenges monitoring and enforcing these CUPS, particularly as they have increasing numbers of conditions. We've heard about just the challenge of deciding, are they meeting their restriction on how many people can live in the residence? That's very challenging for us to determine. And so I think we've got to give some serious thought to, when we write a condition, can we reasonably enforce that condition? So, those would be some things I would ask staff to consider.
When you say the administrative, do you include weekly meetings versus parties?
Yeah, I mean, I'm really talking about large events here. So, you know, I know the fraternity has officers, I know they have to meet regularly and do business. You know, as I mentioned before, they've got physical assets they have to maintain, and, you know, we allow home offices, home businesses to be run, and some of the other allowable uses that you see in our code under residential are effectively allowing some level of administrative activity. A B&amp;B, for example, I mean, the person lives on site and runs their business on that site. So I think those kinds of normal operational business activities, and again, I assume staff could maybe spell that out a little more, or maybe it's already in the code somewhere. But, large events, entertainment, parties, socials, whatever, I don't see those as appropriate in a residential category.
Just making sure, knowing that a meeting would be potentially not the same as just living, so. Okay, Vice Mayor.
Let me add one thing. Like, even, I mean, with our restriction on the number of people, they couldn't have a chapter meeting. Right? I mean, that wouldn't even be allowed.
Right, that's my point. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thanks, yeah. I have one more question for staff that just sort of came up, and I don't know if this is Director Tway or city manager, but earlier, I think one of you, I think it was Councilmember Francis, implied that this is the first of potentially some others' CUPs that, and I don't know if we know yet, that are coming back for review to the Planning Commission. And so I'm wondering how many, if we know if there are any, or are there just some that are maybe on the borderline of meeting the requirements to come back to council, or, I mean, about Planning Commission?
Yes, I'm aware of at least one, that we've received a complaint that appears to violate the conditional use permit. We've been dedicating our time to this item before we move on to that next one. So at this time, I'm aware of one, but it has been summer lately, so it was a little bit quiet for the last few months, so.
Understandable. So I guess with that, I appreciate staff's comments about the conditional use permit is a tool. I know it's not a perfect tool, it's far from a perfect tool, but it does give us one more tool to kind of both enforce and encourage the type of behavior that we are looking for. I hear Councilmember Boswell's suggestions for what some of the maybe modified conditions should be, and I don't really want to get into that too much right now. I don't, I think they're probably good ideas, and maybe they're ones that staff has already thought about, but I don't think we have time for that. In fact, we should be probably voting on going past 10:30. But, I think my big, my big still outstanding thing with the language that is up on the screen that concerns me, is the precedence that this could be setting for the fee and the amendment of an existing use permit that is really going to require a lot of work by I don't know that the modification fee is enough, but I don't have any creative ideas as to how to charge something differently, and we can't just make a new fee. So, I would lean towards the full new application fee in this particular situation to create a precedence for the future, or stick with what our current precedence would be, but I realize I might be in the minority about that, and I don't think that I would throw out the whole thing just for that, if nobody else agrees with me.
And just to make sure, Mallory, I believe that the fee, we weren't just making up the 25%, right? That's already in our fee schedules as a possibility.
Yes, that is the modification fee for any current application.
Right, that's why we came up with that amount, just making sure.
Yeah, that's not what I'm saying. I wouldn't, I believe that this is going to take a lot more time, that it's going to be more equivalent to a new application, and therefore should be considered a new application rather than an amendment, because we are essentially revoking it, even though it's a temporary revocation. So I recognize that the fee for an amendment is the fee for an amendment that's already in our policies.
Okay, cool. Just wanted to make sure. Councilmember Marks.
Thank you. Well, staff was really, I think, really great in coming up with this proposed language. Another really good thing they did was Attachment E to the staff analysis, which goes through each of the staff's draft conditions, the proposed changes from the appellant, and then the staff response and recommendations. I would start with that. Number three, in Attachment E, the, staff has said this has to do with the fraternity wanting to have the city verify the maximum occupancy by inspecting records and going in to the facility. And staff's response is, this proposed amendment provides the square footage calculation per resident. This is a minor amendment to the condition of approval that is not necessary, however, could be added if determined to be helpful. So that's a good place to start looking at it. When you look at number four, staff does not recommend that, so don't go there. When you get to number six, the fraternity shall provide the name and contact information, telephone number, and email address of all of responsible parties to the community development manager, and the fraternity has suggested more parties. Staff likes that, staff recommends considering this amendment because it could be beneficial. Let's go with that one. Okay. On number 13, this is something else that staff would recommend. This is removing a condition. The condition has to do with unpermitted conversion of nonhabitable space. Staff would recommend removing this condition. Let's do that. Let's remove that one. When it comes to number 14, I'd say all of the staff recommendations in Attachment E are excellent, and I would say that's a great starting E are excellent, and I would, I would say that's a great starting point with the process. So let's start there, and then see what else staff comes up with, and perhaps the fraternity comes up with, and perhaps some research into other possibly positive conditions that could be set, and go forward with this language tonight, making it one violation and not two that would make the revocation permanent, which means the fraternity would still be free to apply for another conditional use permit. And I appreciate the concern about staff work. It is a whole lot of work. It would be so much less work for everyone if the fraternity didn't have these continual noise violations and an unruly gathering. It would be great for everybody. So that would be my recommendation to the fraternity, just stop having these parties that cause the problem. I like Council Member Boswell's suggestion or observation that the big events are the problem. And so, just arrange off-campus, off, arrange to have big parties someplace else besides the city of San Luis Obispo, maybe on campus. Maybe if Cal Poly won't make a group grow, maybe they can make a Greek party house or something, and just deal with it. They can deal with it. So I would like to make the motion when the time is appropriate.
So, I think that we are at the point, we're probably going a bit round and round, no pun intended at all, sorry, but I do think we're at the point where it's probably time to move forward. I think that, that the write-up that has been provided for the revocation, conditional revocation, has been updated from our different comments, and I definitely would support you, Council Member Marks, in a motion. And I do think as we talk about code enforcement in May, where is Timmy, there she is, in May, or evening little conversations during the modifications, does there need to be a standard CUP in some of the minimums? It sounds like no, because there's different properties, and each property has different contexts and different needs. And 1998 to 2025, do we have something that triggers a update every so often? So I think there's, there's something, I don't know what that is, I know that, you know, I'm not talking property rights rules right now, but it just seems like we have a challenge right now with this conditional use permit, because we keep having these conversations that don't work with it. And that's why I asked in the beginning when I talked about the de novo and the modifications, like we can make modifications, but we kind of can't. So that's where I say, I think we have some future conversations to have about this with Cal Poly, with staff, and with the community as a whole, both Greek life and the general community that are probably not students, so. With that being said, I will pass it back to Council Member Marks to make the motion.
All right. Okay, you sure?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, well, I would like to move the, that the city council adopt the language that's been proposed, it's on the screen right now. Can you move up to the top so I can see the title of it? Right. The resolution denying an appeal, the appeal, and conditionally revoking the permit for the fraternity exempt from SEQA. All right, under the conditions that are stated in the, in the language that's been on the screen tonight, and it's changed now to be one violation rather than two, that this would be regarded, that they would not be charged the reapplication fee of $11,000, but they would be charged the modification fee. And I think that, is that enough? All right, so that's my motion.
I'll second. City Clerk, can we have roll call? Oh, just kidding. City Attorney?
Sorry, I did just want to note for the record that there are some other minor modifications in the text of the findings that reference essentially the incompatibility under the current conditions and circumstances, and so I just wanted to make sure that the council had seen those changes and was incorporating those as well.
Thank you, and I think what would be really helpful, in all seriousness, is after this is all done, if this goes forward, while we need the pretty version for signatures, if we could have a tracked version so that people could see what was on, what we all agreed to that maybe didn't sit through in this entire meeting.
A legislative, legislative copy.
Yes, legislative copy, perfect.
Yes, my motion does include all of the language that was placed on the screen tonight. Yes.
Okay, before we go to City Clerk, Council Member Frances.
Yeah, thank you for your motion. Really impressed by the advocacy and organization we saw from Delta Chi tonight, and I am gonna reiterate, though, and I think I've said this in several meetings, that we're left with the city managing fraternities versus Cal Poly managing fraternities. And I really feel like if Cal Poly wants to support and encourage the existence of Greek organizations that aren't compatible with residential zones, then they need to provide the space and structure for those events and meetings. And I know we've been working with our partners at Cal Poly to move them in that direction, and we're not close to a solution there yet, but I do wonder that if we moved away from the CUP process, if we could move that conversation forward. And I would love for us to start thinking a little bit differently about how we're using our resources to manage this issue, so I will not be supportive of this motion tonight.
Understood, thank you. Council Member Boswell.
Yeah, just before we vote, I am gonna support the motion, although, again, hopefully staff will be able to consider some of the items I suggested when this comes back to the Planning Commission and ultimately to us. I did just also want to thank the fraternity for hanging in there, well, most of you, not, most of you hung in there tonight. And just state, you know, my, that I'm happy that you're here and you're willing to engage. Did I correctly read that you have your 11 basic expectations? Probably have those memorized, probably had to memorize this as a pledge. I read them, they're fantastic. At least five of them pertain directly to the issue we are discussing today. And so I would ask you all to reconsider those every day, and think about how these 11 basic expectations inform your behavior at Cal Poly and help us solve this problem. So thank you again for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, City Clerk, just Vice Mayor.
Thanks, one more final word just to explain, I think, where I'm ending up. I am, thanks for the great discussion tonight, thank you to Delta Chi. I still hope that those members and alumni that reached out to me want to continue this conversation. I would still very much be open to that, how, looking at how we can move forward together. I'm still very interested in that conversation. I'm disappointed that we're here, but again, as I kind of implied, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, so I'll be, I'll be supporting this motion with the hopes that this is just the beginning, maybe not necessarily with Delta Chi, but that we can continue the larger discussion about how to deal with this better. And Council Member Frances, appreciate the comments about Cal Poly and the need for them to help us with this, because we can't solve this as a city. So that's how I will vote, and why.
Thank you so much. City Clerk.
Council Member Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, and I have to say that I agree with Council Member Frances and Vice Mayor. I hope this is a conversation we continue with, obviously, all the fraternity members here and that are not here, and with the city, I'm sorry, with the university, so that we can really move forward together. And that also includes the community at large, and that's, I know, challenging to wrangle an entire community, but there's a lot of people who would like to have some things to say for us to actually move together and get through to the other side. So, City Clerk.
Council Member Frances?
No.
Council Member Boswell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schorsner?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1. Thank you for the incredibly difficult conversation. Thank you to Delta Chi, and I'm gonna ask you to leave very quietly, because we have one more thing to go through very quickly. We hope it's very quickly. Thank you, Rachel. So last and not least, we have Item 7E. Now, the reason I mention very quickly is we have 15 minutes, and if it goes over 15 minutes, we have to vote to be able to stay here longer than 11, because that is the rule, so just highlighting that. So with that, without further ado, we are looking at introducing an ordinance amending Title 17 of the city's municipal code to include an applicability subsection exempting certain public safety features in city projects from the zoning regulations. And Director Timmy Tway and Principal Planner Rachel Cohen will present the report. Thank you so much, Mallory.
As we mentioned, we're gonna be looking at amendments to the city's zoning regulations. The recommendation is that council introduce an ordinance amending Title 17 of the city's municipal code, specifically Section 17.0202. All the 2s. This is the purpose and authority of the zoning regulations, and the amendment would include applicability, as well exempt certain public safety features of the city, for city projects. Every year, the city undertakes various projects for the benefit of the community. These projects range from new facilities, such as parking structures, to modifications to existing facilities, and all these projects are required to comply with the city's zoning regulations. However strict adherence to these regulations can be quite difficult or impossible to meet, given the unique nature of many of these city projects. There are instances where the city may need to include certain features for the benefit of promoting public health and safety. And due to the current standards of some of our zoning regulations, some of those specific features may not be permitted, and often are required to go through a lengthy process in order to receive an exception from the city's zoning regulations. In addition, the city needs, if the city needs to make a modification to a project that's been approved through the development review process to include a necessary safety feature, it must go back to the original reviewing authority to be re-reviewed. This causes significant delays in project delivery, and also equates to substantial city costs, as well as risks to public health, safety, and welfare. The proposed amendment would provide limited flexibility to allow city projects to include features that protect public health, safety, and welfare, even if they wouldn't normally comply with our zoning regulations. So a specific example is the safety netting that has been discussed to be installed on the top of city parking structures. The safety netting would exceed the allowed height for the zone, but is critical for ensuring health and safety and welfare for the community. Currently, the zoning regulations only allow very specific features, there are lists such as solar energy systems, chimney, elevator towers, and such, that are allowed to be taller than the allowed, the maximum height for that zone. Safety netting is not one of those listed items, and wouldn't be allowed. The zoning regulations also have a section on fences, but the code only addresses fencing built at ground level. Without the approval of the proposed amendment, the city would not be able to install safety netting under the current zoning regulations. Additionally, the zoning regulations don't provide a clear statement on how they are to be applied to properties within the city. The city currently operate, and has historically operated, its zoning regulations to require that both private and public properties are subject to the zoning regulations, but does not actually expressly state this. So the amendment would provide clarity within the applicability section to modify the historic practice and clarify how the zoning regulations apply. The proposed amendment would include a new subsection to Section 17.02.020, and this would outline that the zoning regulations would apply to all property when the city limits, as well as property that has submitted applications for an annexation or subdivision. Additionally, the text would stipulate that the county, or the city would be exempt from the requirements of the zoning regulations for public safety features associated with public projects necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Lastly, the amendment includes a definition for public safety features, which is outlined here on this slide, to include a variety of different things that might be necessary in order to protect the community's health, safety, and welfare. It should be noted that city projects, such as a new fire station, for example, a significant addition to an existing city building, would still be required to adhere to all requirements of the city's zoning regulations. As proposed, the tax amendment is consistent with the general plan and the zoning regulations. The land use element policy 12.1 talks about the city having zoning regulations to allow for, for specific zones, property development standards and such. The proposed amendment would provide procedural clarity regarding the application of the zoning regulations to city properties and projects. Their land use element programs highlight public spaces, and developments are designed to enhance public safety, as well as welfare of the community. The intent of the amendment is to facilitate necessary safety features in city projects. Additionally, the amendment would apply, would provide clarity about how the zoning regulations apply, and expressly authorize the city to incorporate necessary public safety features to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. And on September 24th, the Planning Commission reviewed the proposed zoning regulations tax amendments, and unanimously recommended the city council approve the proposed amendments. The project is exempt under the common sense exemption, as the project clearly does not have the potential, or this tax amendment does not have the potential to cause any significant effect on the environment. Individual projects will still be required to comply with SEQA as applicable. Therefore, staff's recommendation is that council introduce a draft ordinance amending Title 17 of the city's municipal code, and staff is available for any questions that council might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Really happy we get to move this forward, or hopefully get to move this forward. This is a very important part of the parking structures, and something we continued to bring up over and over, so thank you very much for this concise report. With that, any questions of my colleagues? Vice Mayor? Okay, any public comment?
Yes, we have two public comment. Mary Jane Jodry and William Jodry.
Hello, thank you very much. I'm very tired, so, thank you for everybody for being here, and I guess the policeman left. My son, Thomas Jodry, is the young man who fell from the parking structure on Marsh Street September 14th, 2019, and died. And I think he was the seventh of eight people that have died in the parking structures. And I've addressed you all before, and I've met with everybody in chambers, and I promised you I'd go to Sacramento, and I did. And then after that, I met with Salud Carpa Hall, so I told you guys I went to Washington too. And I come from a long family line of people that have, advocate for this country, couple hundred years worth. And I have a wonderful husband who started Big Brothers, Big Sisters of San Luis Obispo County. Anyway, we'd really like to see this go through. It's time. And if someday, maybe I could see the new parking structure and see all the little bells and whistles you're putting in that, I would really appreciate it. You're not doing this just for time. You're not doing this just for Tommy, you're doing this for everybody. And one of these days, it may be one of your family members that pulls a button inside the parking structure and needs some help. You know, you just never know what can happen. Anyway, it might just be one of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're falling apart.
It's late, it's okay.
I'll make it really short. It's been a long haul, six years for all of us, and we've come here and talked to you guys, and you guys all know Tommy's story by now. And so, you know, there's just two things we've ever tried to accomplish. One is to make it a safer situation for everybody, because if we don't do this, you know somebody else is going to die. And then, of course, one of these days, we'd like to hold David Knight accountable. But thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And with that, we move it back to council, Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the Jodry family for coming tonight and for your long advocacy for this, and happy to move this forward when it's time.
Absolutely. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, agreed with Councilmember Francis and happy to second.
This has been a long time coming, absolutely. Thank you very much. With that, Councilmember Francis, I can take that as a motion for staff recommendations, and a Vice Mayor as a second. I see nothing else. City Clerk?
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schorsman?
Yes.
Councilmember Boswell?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, the Jodrys, for coming and supporting today.
And I just want to say thank you, Jodrys, for your advocacy and for just, you know, and our sympathy on the loss of your son.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. With that, really briefly, we probably don't want to go dive deeply into everyone's liaison reports and communications, but I do want to make sure that we state that, I believe, yes, all of us were at the California Cities Annual Conference in Long Beach, and that was the 8th or the 10th of October. And that is, we are one of 473 cities out of the 484 cities that are members, and a great time to learn from other cities. During that time, I just want to congratulate Vice Mayor. She received one of the Cal Cities Awards, the Leadership II Torch, is that correct, Vice Mayor? Yes, perfect. I also received one, and I am now going to be the African American Caucus President for Cal Cities. So that was something that changed in their last meeting, and I will bring it forward in case anyone would like to share their liaison committee reports. Councilmember Francis?
Yeah, thank you so much. Keep it really fast here. In addition to Cal Cities, also attended our Main Street Conference here in the city of Slow, got to do a walking tour with Pierre Radamaker and presentations from Cal Poly and our own Timmy Tway, which was fabulous. Also attended the apprenticeship awards, and that was pretty great. We had folks from all over the state come down to honor our labor apprentices, from Tony Thurmond to Senator Laird. It was an awesome celebration. Also, just wanted to put in a plug, our very own cap Slow is pretty worried right now about funding and any advocacy that anybody in the community can do to our congresspeople on behalf of our Community Service Block grants. We need to make sure that those stay in place to help the most needy in our communities, so please reach out if you would like to help advocate on that front.
All right. Thank you. It's 11:00 and especially affect to our duties. We need to have a motion to move forward and just finish up our reports. Can I have a motion? Councilmember Marks?
So moved.
Second? Councilmember Boswell? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, going back to Councilmember Marks.
Oh, thank you. Yes, excuse me. Yes, I was at the league conference, and I went to as many fire preparation and emergency response sections as I could go to. One was called Trial Next Time, or no, Trial by Fire, and the other one was called Fire Next Time. So I feel like a lot of really good information there. I wanted to say that the Mediation Center now has a name, which is the Center for Dispute Resolution at San Luis Obispo College of Law. And I'm hoping that the meeting that was canceled earlier does go forward. I'd like to attend that meeting with Greg Herman, representatives from Questa and from Cal Poly. But it's moving along very, very quickly right now, the formation of the center. And I attended the Pollution Control District's Executive Committee meeting yesterday. I wanted to tell everybody that coming up on the 23rd of October is a state of the San Luis Obispo Creek watershed event that's being held October 23rd at 4:30 at the Octagon Barn. And it's, if you're interested, go to creeklands.org. They have been studying and making a restoration plan for the past three years, and they're going to be talking about that, and also a roadmap for the future restoration of San Luis Obispo Creek. So that's all for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Boswell?
Thanks. Just Airport and Land Use Commission was canceled as was Laughco or when the schedule, which seems to be becoming a theme, by the way. Not a lot of business going on either of those two entities. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention is just thanks, thank you to the Police Department and all the city staff who made sure that there was a safe, no-kings event while supporting the public's ability to freely express itself. So, thanks.
Thank you. Absolutely a big thank you. Vice Mayor, any reports?
It's 1:00 AM for me, so I'll say no for now.
Sounds good. I understand. I do want to say a big thank you to the Board of Supervisors for moving forward with the RFP process for, to advance the ground emergency ambulance transport that happened today in their meeting. I just want to say thank you to that. Also, a real quick thank you to the Daisy Girl Scout troop. I went to chat with them today, or last week, and looking forward to welcoming Marin County to come and visit San Luis Obispo tomorrow. With that, we will see you all next week for a special meeting on October 28th. We will be discussing the Cal Poly housing, actually, and then we'll be discussing renter protections and tenant rights and landlord rights and responsibilities here in council chambers. Thanks so much, and good night.
Night, all.